Call this meeting to Tacoma Park City Council order. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
He must be in the hall.
He's here.
Oh, in the back.
It's my dinner.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting. We didn't have one last week. Luckily, we didn't schedule Ward 6 for last week, but we scheduled Ward 6 for tonight. And I see we have a number of people here from Ward 6. First, I'd like to point out that there is information, and I hope everybody got some. If you didn't, there's some in the back of the room. And also, did everybody sign in so we know who got here? We got everybody? And it's just helpful to know who came so that we know any of the outreach efforts, what success we've had with various methods of letting people know about this. Since this is a relatively new part of council meeting, we had Ward 3 night last month. Ward 6 is the second ward night, and then we'll go through each of the wards in turn. And so, last time, we kind of did some of our meeting first and then did the continuation of the ward night. And we thought this time, maybe a better way to do it was to, since you all were here and outside for the first part and the reception, that it would be good to continue dialogue with you and hear some, any of your concerns or anything that you wanted to say, or requests for information, and anything that we can help you with or provide. This is a good opportunity to do that. So, maybe Councilmember Schultz would like to say a few things, and then we'd like to open it up for any of you who have any comments to make. And when you do make any comments... It would be very helpful if you used a microphone, since this is being broadcast. So, you've got your choice. You can go to the podium there in the middle of the room, or you can come up and sit at the table, whatever you'd prefer, but that would be very helpful. So, if Councilmember Schultz would like to say anything first.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would. First of all, it is so great to see such a good contingent of people from Ward 6. Let's say yay, Ward 6! Give me a W, right? So, I think this is a great thing that we've instituted here, and this is because it's getting folks out, and this is what's really, really important. So, thanks for coming. And I guess it's new for all of us. As Mayor Williams has said, we're trying this out with different ward nights, and sort of an experiment, but it seems to be working. Now, things I want to say, a couple of things, is that we've been through quite a trial for our city and for us all personally with this incredibly amazing winter weather that we have had. And while for some of us, it's sort of been exciting, and certainly those of us with kids, it's probably been, you know, really kind of fun for a while to take them out sledding and to enjoy all this, and to certainly to write home and say, gosh, you wouldn't believe what's happening in our neighborhood with all the snow. I know I've been sending emails to my grandchildren in Texas and other places. But the truth of the matter is, is that this has also been a very scary experience for an awful lot of people. We've had people in our ward, I don't know about the rest of the city, who were without power for as up to 72 hours. People that I talked to had gone through all of their firewood and were using gas stove tops to keep themselves warm. Or one case, a lady, a single lady I visited happened to have a gas log fireplace, and she was using that to heat her house. Other people were able to just relocate. One couple who lived up on Wildwood that I talked to were eating their meals at the IHOP and praying a lot, and were getting to the sort of the end of their rope in terms of thinking they might have to go out of town to visit with friends and stay. And so, people did what they had to do, and thank the Lord that it didn't last more than 72 hours in our ward, and I don't know about elsewhere in the city. But it was a kind of an emergency where if this was a summer storm, you could get in your car and go someplace if you lost power, and we've all had that experience. But this is a situation where some people couldn't even dig out their cars. And if they could dig them out, they had no place to go because the roads hadn't gotten plowed yet. And it could have easily gotten a lot worse if, say, there'd been a severe water main break, or there'd been a fire, a house or something like that, or some building. And that's the sort of thing that I was worried about. I think we're extraordinarily fortunate that there was no loss of lives in our city. We managed to survive this whole thing without having to bring in the National Guard, like they did in the District of Columbia. And any of us who've visited outside the city boundaries realize that the plowing that's occurred within our city boundaries has been downright amazing. I tried to go across Erskine Avenue a few days ago, and as soon as I crossed the boundary, I felt like I'd gone into Mordor or someplace like that because it was a sheet of ice in all directions. And I turned around and scampered back into my town again. A lot of us nevertheless have suffered losses. The snow has... The snow plows themselves did damage. I had an email today from a gentleman in my ward who's very concerned about damage done to his lawn and some of the ornaments on his property. I know from my own house, we had a major amount of shrubbery, just demolished, and the front gutter on my house came crashing down like Niagara Falls. It was a thundering spectacular event, but I don't have a gutter. Unfortunately, I didn't get hurt in the process of, in that whole process, so there's damages that need to be repaired. I think it's all regrettable, and the case where the snow plows have done damage, it's all been done inadvertently. I think it's important for us to remember that the city didn't create this snowstorm. City has a responsibility to keep the streets plowed for safety reasons, and they did a good job of that. And in the course of doing that, sidewalks that had been shoveled out got, you know, pushed, snow pushed back on them and things of that nature, and it's been very frustrating. So, I ask, and I think it's important for all of us to realize that it's been hard for everybody, not just you. And if there's some property loss, it's just simply unfortunate. But if that's the worst that's happened, I think we're darn fortunate, considering what the possibilities have been. I'm not going to talk about it tonight, but at a future point, I'd like to bring to the city's attention my concern about the fact that we didn't really have a plan for a warming shelter that somebody, that people could get to. City doesn't have the capacity to set up a full-blown emergency shelter. Montgomery County does, but the nearest one is not close by, at least not under the circumstances. And this is a concern that I think that I'd like the city to focus on. We have an emergency preparedness committee. That's a standing committee of the city, and this is the kind of thing I think that committee could focus on. And I know, and you'll hear a comment about this from others, is that the city is, you know, the staff and others are looking at all the lessons that learned, what the experiences have been for all of us over the last 10 days to two weeks, operationally and all other ways, to see what the city did right, what it could have or should have perhaps done better. But personally, I think in our own households, I've done a lot of thinking about that myself. You know, we found ourselves without batteries, for Pete's sakes, you know, thinking, oh, brother. You know, so this caught us all off guard, but it seems like the worst of it's over. And we're here tonight, and we're all seem to be safe and sound, and I'm just glad that you're here. And I hope that you will take the time to make comments on anything that's on your mind, because that's what this public process is all about. So, I will be quiet from this point on unless I need to respond.
Pardon?
Well, that's true. There's always that exception.
Thank you. And I just wanted to point out, for anybody who might need it, that we do have Spanish translation here, if anybody needs it. Irma Andia's in the back of the room. Anybody have any comments, questions, anything they'd like to say, anything you'd like to bring to our attention, anything, good, bad, whatever you've got? Go to the microphone. And if you can, please give us your name.
I live at 1213 Kirkland Avenue. And Friday, when the snow started, I mean, like, it started in the afternoon, and it went on throughout the night. The person who was using the truck to push all the snow, after the snow reached about that height, I asked him to clean in front of Kirkland Avenue because I came out and I was trying to get his attention. And all I'm saying is, I think if you clear the road on Kirkland Avenue, because Kennewick run right there, it's kind of like a tree lane, so if you clear the road there and drivers are coming up, they can go to, they can drive better. But what, it had, the snow came on Friday, and this Sunday gone, I asked the guy again to clean it. He did do a little on Kirkland Avenue, but after it reached that height, and when he did push it, went all over that, it go in the walkway. I cleaned it out again, but coming this Sunday, after a few days of the truck pushing and pushing, it reached like this height, about three or four feet. I couldn't see the side of my husband's car. So, I Saturday, last week's Saturday night, I stayed there four hours, trying to dig out and knock out all the snow so my husband could go to work on Sunday. This Sunday gone, I asked the guy again, after having that big thing in the middle, like an island, I said, sir, can you just push out the middle, please, so that we can drive comfortably? He said, lady, every time I come here, all you do is ask me, can my husband park, so let me shovel out the snow? I said, sir, I've been asking you for a whole week. So, what I did was, I had shoveled out like almost two car lengths, including like three feet away from the curb into my lawn, so when you walked to the car, you could walk to the side of the car. And he was kind of rude to me, but, I mean, all of us has suffered. All I'm saying is, say, for example, the snow starts and it's like six inches or something, if we clean all the places that cars are not parked, because where I live on Kirkland Avenue is just like one-way parking. But if you clean where there is no parking, then it will be easier on the person who's plowing, and it will be easier on us as the citizens. That's all I have to say, because that was very frustrating. Because every time I clean, he will push back the snow. And since I had cleaned like almost two car lengths away, I said, just clean the middle island that a big snow is there. What he did was, he came and he pushed back all the snow, and I had to shovel it again and again and again. That's all I have to say. I wish it could be better. Thank you.
You're at, what is your address, 1213?
Yeah, motherfucker, he was here when I was standing with a plaid jacket. He was there in your vehicle, and I was trying to get his attention to come, and he was there in the, in the truck. Mama, I was there with a plaid jacket, with a big boot.
That was on Kirkland?
It was you.
That was on Kirkland?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Either you want to either come to the table or the podium, one or the other.
I just want to know, what are the rules as far as who cleans up? Because it's not clear. Where there's, if you're coming out of your walkway or driveway, where does the landlord responsibility end, and where does the city take over? Because I live in an apartment, I was fortunate to have the men from both houses clear a path, but to the back, I can't really go out there without risk of falling because it's, there's so much ice. And, you know, we haven't seen the landlord. And walking, even if you try to walk out of your home, out of your apartment, right at the street where the walkway ends, and you step down to the street, there are mounds of snow and ice. So, it's, it's not clearing.
In general, the city clears the public right-of-way, and the owner of the property is responsible for the property. For snow, property owners are also responsible for clearing the public sidewalk. So, essentially, the city starts at the curb. I know that in this storm, with these storms, with the amount of snow that came, everybody ran out of places to put it. And I know in many cases, the city, like everybody else around here, used equipment to put it in trucks and haul it away, just because there was no room. I think this is one of those times when it's very difficult, because in order to get the street clear, you end up putting some into the sidewalk, and as a number of people have talked about, kind of put it back in where somebody has just cleared, maybe the, you know, getting the car out or getting out the sidewalk from your house or your building out to the street. I know that what I've always done is keep my eye out for whenever the plow comes through, and as soon as they dump a little bit back in, I go back out and move it right away before it gets frozen. And I know that can be very difficult and impossible for some people. But this was a pretty extraordinary storm, and we're ending up with snow in places where nobody wants it and where it shouldn't be. And there are going to be some, some places, particularly some sidewalks, that are just going to be impossible to clear for a lot longer time than anybody thinks is safe.
My second statement is concerning. How do you verify whether a landlord lives on the property or he lives somewhere else? And who keeps track or records of that? I know every year around, at the end, sometime in September or the end of September, landlords have to fill out a rental form identifying a manager or management team or how to reach them. I've had a lot of problems with that, and I was especially concerned when I saw that landlords were, are supposed to fill out this statement by September 30th, and my landlord didn't even turn in his document until January 15th. And I found, I mean, is he allowed to break the rules, or what's, you know, how is that handled?
Maybe we can get a little information on that from our Director of Housing and Community Development, Sarah Danes, who's in the room. And I'll also point out that Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief, Acting Chief, Ed Corsi is here, and also Daryl Braithwaite, sitting in the back of the room, who's Director of Public Works. Did you want to?
Statement is, it's concerning the, how do you know that, well, what I would really like to find out is, why aren't all the apartments, why aren't all tenants given a lease, which would have, everybody would be aware of their rights, and it would make things a lot easier? Because it causes a lot of confusion in a building where you might be the only tenant with a lease, and the other tenants don't have a lease. And I saw that a property on Ann Street was closed for not being licensed. I guess he was getting away for a while with renting without a license, but there are other buildings that, where people are being charged exorbitant rents, and I don't know how the city can investigate that. And fourthly, I think there needs to be a little more transparency. I've had difficulty getting documents from both the police and housing, and I am entitled, according to the Constitution, to get these documents. Thank you.
Good evening. Mrs. Gordon raised a couple of questions. The first, according to my notes, is the rent report. You may know or recall that the city of Tacoma Park has its own rent stabilization law, which is, in other places, they call rent control. And part of that legislation requires the property owners to report on an annual basis the rents that are being charged for individual units for the previous year. Those are due, as Mrs. Gordon indicated, at the end of September. If a property owner fails to submit the required report by that deadline, they then get a notice of violation, and if they fail to submit after receiving that notice, a citation is issued and a $1,000 fine is imposed. Most people, by the time they get the notice of violation, come in, submit the report. And, excuse me, very rarely do we actually end up going to court about that. As far as investigating the accuracy of the rents that are reported or that are noted on the report, what staff will do is random checks of the tenants, advising them that this information has been submitted by the property owner, and if the information is incorrect, then they, and we encourage them to contact our office, because frankly, that's really the only way that we know if someone has, is being charged what is considered an illegal rent. That's not as successful as we'd like it to be, but it's the only option we have right now as far as being able to verify whether or not the rents that are reported on the, by the landlord, are indeed what they're actually charging. When we go through and validate the rent reports themselves, we base it on historical data provided in previous years. So, if the numbers all work out, then they're in compliance. As far as the lease requirements, the city code does not require a lease, but it does have very specific language in terms of what terms or conditions or statements should be in any written lease that is provided by a landlord to a tenant. We encourage all the local landlords to have a lease. We have a standard lease form that addresses all of the city's laws and ordinances that applies to housing that's available and distributed to them at the landlord seminar. It's also available on the city's webpage in both English and Spanish. Many people do have written leases, many people do not. Many people go on a month-to-month word-of-mouth kind of lease once the initial term of the original lease has expired. And then, as far as the Ann Street property, I'm not sure exactly, but I can investigate that and find out more about it. We do take people who are operating a rental facility illegally, they haven't secured a license, and follow through in the court process. And we've taken a number of people to court because they have not secured the required licenses. In general, we're pretty successful in getting them to come into compliance with the law. And I think that's all of the points that were raised.
Somebody else have question, comment? Sure. Herb, you can sit up front if you want.
My name is Herbert Burst, and I live on 13th Place. And it's one street, and the problem that we're having is on-street parking. And it's better than it was, but it's still a concern. It's only one block long. Now, the area is single-family detached homes, and there's no reason why you cannot park in front of your own house. And it was a lot worse a couple of years ago, but like I said, it's still a concern of parking on that street. Now, I know some areas have tags for permission parking, and I think this was brought up a while back, but it was shut down. But just want to know to voice that concern about the problem parking. And if you can't park in front of your house, if you have a lot of groceries, how are you going to unload it? You know, you're going to stop traffic to say, everybody, you have to stop until I unload my car, and you make me next 10, like 10 minutes, I'll load your car, and make everybody, you back up or just wait. And the snow just makes it a little more, more of an issue. But it's a year-long problem, and these are all single-family detached homes, or supposed to be. Okay?
Do you have a sense of why? I mean, is it that people are parking in front of one house instead of their own house, or do some people have more cars than others?
Some people have more cars, and also, is, we're right next to Erskine. And some people do not have driveways in Erskines, and they prefer to park on our street. Now, the corner house always has cars parked in front of it that don't belong there, but they have a driveway. Okay? Now, somebody asked me, said, why don't you put a driveway in? Well, we have a hill, and it would require digging, digging into it, and then somebody at night who would knows there could fall into it and everything else. And it's just, we have the little, the concrete driveway, you know, the little dip that's there, but I think that would be more of a problem than a cure. And then, you're taking up a parking space by the entrance of the driveway itself. So, and then if somebody didn't, kept parking in front, that then I have, we have a problem there, I think.
But it doesn't seem like an area where there would be a lot of commuters parking there. Okay. So, it's neighborhood residents probably that are... And it's currently parking on both sides, right?
Yeah, this current, but it gets filled up. I mean, it's, it comes and goes. Okay? And, you know, you come home at night, you're expected to be able to park in front of your house, not down the block and over. So...
I'm not sure there's an easy solution.
Permit.
Well, do we, do we, is the permitting process for anywhere, or is it, or is it, does anybody know if it's restricted in any way as far as? I know it was originally done for particular reasons about metro and things like that. Is there permit parking possible anywhere?
Permit parking in Forest Park.
Is there?
Oh, yeah. That whole little area.
Isn't there a process by which the residents can petition to have parking?
Typically, in one, an area that not just one block, it'd be permit parking, you would be establishing a permit parking area that would include a number of blocks, because you create spillover problems if you just have it on one block. So, you'd need to look at the broader area.
Is this something that has been discussed at a neighborhood association meeting? It might be the first place to start for the neighbors talking.
It might be the first place to start for the neighbors to talk to each other about it.
Because with speed bumps or parking permits or anything like that, we encourage the neighborhood association to come up with something that's equitable so that it doesn't get just pushed one street over. And if then there's a petition, and it's been vetted through the neighborhood association, then that's, makes it fairly easy to do. Anybody else?
Bruce?
Yep?
Let me just comment, is that I had one couple this evening speak to me about this very problem on Jackson, Jackson Avenue, somebody who parks their car permanently on Jackson but doesn't live in the neighborhood, never uses the car, just comes by and checks on it periodically and then disappears. They don't know who the person is, or why they parked their car there. It's legally, it has a proper license tag, but it just becomes a permanent flower pot.
Do they move it every 72 hours?
Nope.
Tow it.
Well... It can be, it can be called in and tagged, and if it's not moved within 72 hours, it can be towed.
Well, that may be a solution that I was not aware of. We'll have to think about that.
That seems to be a neighborhood problem, because it happens on my street, too.
A car's never moved. Why would you have a car if you're not going to...
Sounds like it's a more common problem than people realize.
The police tow cars in Ward 2. I call them, they tag it, they don't move it, they tow it.
Good, thank you for that.
Barry?
Hi, I'm Barry Howard. I'm the President of the New Hampshire Gardens Citizens Association. And first off, I'd like to applaud all my neighbors from Ward 6 for showing up tonight. And then I'd like to applaud the city for instituting this Ward Night series. I think this is a really good idea, so thumbs up on that. I'd like to applaud the Public Works for their perseverance in clearing the roadways of snow, and applaud the mayor for leading by example with his Public Works Meals on Wheels service that he implemented last week. But, that's all the good news, so now here's the... Actually, it's not all bad, really. I just, right. Actually, I just, I wanted to echo comments by Councilmember Schultz and Mayor Williams, who were ideas that this weather event was, had a fear factor, it was pretty high for a lot of people, and that will be living with its legacy for some time to come. And that's exactly what I'm here to talk about tonight. So I did sort of a walking audit of New Hampshire Gardens perimeter today in my commute to work, at the front end and the back end, to make my way all the way around. And we have nine bus stops around New Hampshire Gardens, and there's only two of them that you could, that you are accessible on foot without changing grade, except maybe to step up on the curb, without, so you, basically, you're on pavement the whole time, you know, you're not having to mount mounds of snow and ice and endanger yourself. And there's a good number of people that are walking out in the street, which is, I'm sure Erwin Mack is probably just pulling his hair out, because, you know, all of the efforts that he's gone to over the years, try to fight for pedestrian safety around the crossroads area, it's just kind of like the snow event, it's just throwing it all out the window. But, but, the good news is people care, like myself. So I actually took my snow shovel out yesterday, and went and dug a path from the new, from the Service Road along New Hampshire Avenue, just south of Holton, to bus stop number 55, or whatever it was. So, and then there, and the only other one that's clear is the one that's up between two of the major shopping centers along University, on the 1100 block there, or something like that. So what I'm, what I'm here to ask for is how, is the city's support to encourage citizens to do the right thing, and go out and be concerned about pedestrians, too, because the mountains of ice and snow are, as you mentioned, Mayor Williams, are likely to be here for a while now, and it is creating some hazardous situations for people on the streets. So if we can try to, you know, like, you know, Victory Garden style, and go out and like, and all band together, and go out, and I know everybody's had it, but still, like, it's sort of a utilitarian, you know, principle here, it's like greater good for all, if we can get out there and go ahead and bend our backs a little bit more and shovel a little more slow, snow, and just to make the roadway safer. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks, that's a good observation. As I drove down New Hampshire today, I noticed some of those bus stops and saw groups of people basically standing in the street, because that's all they could do.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ronell Turner, I live at 7314 New Hampshire Avenue. I'm directly across from the community center on the service lane, and I have three concerns. I apologize for being late, so it may have already been addressed, but my first concern is directed to Ms. Braithwaite. And is there a schedule for the snowplows? Because it seems like I have to email my councilmember, Fred here, thank you Fred, for all of your support, or I have to stand out and wave for a snowplow to come to the service lane. New Hampshire Avenue, the state gets that. Wildwood, Tacoma Park, clears that, but no one hits the service lane, or it's three and four days later. Is there an order or schedule? There is? Are we on it?
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
The biggest problem that we have on roads like the Service Road is it is indeed on a schedule, but the problem is oftentimes access, and it was a problem in the last storm, and it was a problem in the most recent storms. There was a box van truck that prohibited significantly our ability to get through there. When that happens, our regular plows can't access the roads, and we need to call out other types of equipment. We have a loader, and we have a skid steer ourselves, and oftentimes we'll dispatch those. Anybody who saw the Gazette article noted that oftentimes when our loader is not clearing roads, it's pulling our stuck trucks out of intersections and whatnot. So there is indeed a schedule, each driver has a route map, there's five zones in the city where a truck is assigned to each zone. We keep good records on what trucks have been where. If a truck hasn't gone in a location, it's usually because there's an access issue, or we've had a vehicle breakdown and the intended route didn't get done because a truck's been towed back to be repaired. So there's a number of different things that impact when a street is done. Obviously, for, we have a priority list where we have first-tier streets that are cleared because they're through streets, they're accessways, they're connecting major thoroughfares, those are the roads that the plow trucks go to first. And then we have cross streets that are the second tier, dead ends, cul-de-sacs, small roads, they're the third tier. So every driver has a list of the roads they get to, and I hope that answers the question. No one needs to call to get a plow to their street. We're keenly aware of what trucks have been where and what streets still need to be done. In this last storm, we also called on resources from contractors, so in addition to our vehicles, we had a company that provided three loaders throughout the city, and another company that provided two skid steers. So in areas of the city where you have more than one driving lane, it's because our contractors were able to get in there and haul snow out. Just one more point, it's something that will be continuing throughout this week and next week, and probably into the third week. It's a very long, slow process to widen a road from a single clear lane to an area where you can actually have cars pass, or widen parking lanes. So it will be a very long process that we'll be undergoing for the next several weeks.
Darrell, what's a skid steer?
It's all frequently known as a bobcat, but that's a vendor's name, like Kleenex. I mean, a skid steer is those little, little bug-like pieces of equipment that are able to turn and swivel and have a bucket that lifts up.
Then what's a front loader?
Front-end loader is a very large wheeled tractor with a big scoop bucket that lifts up.
That's hinged in the middle.
Yes, it's, a loader can only really go forward and backwards. Skid steers have the ability to sort of swivel and twist, so they're much more agile in getting around. They're also narrower than a regular plow vehicle.
Thank you.
Ms. Braithwaite, if we feel we have been forgotten, other than, okay, if we feel we have been forgotten, other than emailing our councilman, is there a contact phone number, an emergency number, or email address where we can get you?
You can always contact the police dispatch, they're available 24/7, and they take those kind of calls. They have our access numbers and can, and forward to us. If it's during work hours, people can email me or call the Public Works Department. We have staff 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, rain, snow, ice, sleet, building closed, whatever, we're there.
All right, thank you. Ms. Braithwaite brought up a good concern, and that was the access. And I did talk to the Acting Chief out in the hallway, because one of the concerns, as I was informed by one of, informed by one of Mr. Schultz's email, is that the bobcat or the snowplow couldn't get down the service lane, Ms. Braithwaite, because a car was illegally parked. He was actually too close to the corner, so the snowplow could not maneuver the turn to get down the service lane. So I asked the Acting Chief out in the hallway, would it be, would it have been insensitive of me to call the police to ask them to remove the car, because it was hindering progress? And so the Acting Chief said that I could have called, and you've been towing, and things like that. Okay, so that's good to know.
Look out.
Look out, service lane 7300, here I come, I'm gonna have my own little patrol. And then finally, I live next door to a field of ugly bamboo. Are the Lees in here today? The Lee family? Okay. The Lee family, they own the house at the corner of New Hampshire, but it's on Merwood, and then behind them, they own the second light, uh, lot, ugly bamboo. And the bamboo, because of the weight of the ice and snow, is leaning on my house, literally on my house. I had to pay someone to cut down the bamboo. It's, it's been leaning into the service lane, it narrowed our already one-lane street tremendously. What do I do when someone else's property or their foliage damages my property? And not, my drains are loose because of this bamboo, my magnolia tree, I don't know if it's going to bloom like it has, because many branches have, you know, been removed due to this heavy bamboo that was weighted down the ice, down by the ice. What do I do? Who's held responsible for that? Should I be paying someone to cut it down, or is it the owner, the property owner's responsibility?
I know that in general, trees, bushes, those kinds of things, as soon as they cross the property line, even if it, the trunk, the origin of the growth in the ground is on your neighbor's property, as soon as it crosses the property line, you have the ability to, you know, trim whatever you need to trim. I know we have particular regulations about bamboo.
I have a bamboo problem in my ward.
Would somebody who's more current on their knowledge of bamboo care to provide a little information? Darrell, are you the one?
Darrell is the one.
Bamboo is, is, I guess, several issues. One is it is a very invasive and very intensive kind of plant that can take root and then spread in areas where even the person that planted didn't intend it. The city does have a ordinance that restricts bamboo from encroaching your neighbor's property. It's supposed to be within six feet of your property boundaries, according to city code.
It can't be within six feet.
Yeah, it can't be, it needs to be six feet back from the property line. If they, if a person contains their bamboo six feet from their property line, there's nothing in the city that says it can't grow and stay and be there, if that's the choice of how they, they'd like to plant their lot. The point at which it encroaches on a neighbor's property and becomes a problem, then it becomes, you know, an issue that the city or code enforcement or the city arborist can, can then talk to the owners about. It's a very difficult problem to solve, and we've had the issue in several other wards. Because of the nature of the plant, it's very difficult to get rid of. We also have bamboo on city rides away and city lots that we've been working to get rid of, so we've, we're improving our recommendations in terms of what measures you can take to get rid of it. Most effective still seems to be digging it up, which, of course, in areas where there's other trees, that can be a problem. So it's a, it's an ongoing issue, usually one that requires a lot of neighborhood cooperation and discussion, as well as the city can get involved in citations if it violates the city code in terms of where it's growing and from one property to another. The issue of hitting your house or any of that, that would be, once it's a, kind of an airspace issue, once a fending branch is in a, is across your property boundary, then it's your responsibility to deal with and manage. However, you can also talk to your insurance company, and they can give you advice about ways to notify a neighboring property owner of a potential hazard or violation of their yard that you think's going to affect your yard. So there's legal and civil ways that you can manage that, just to notify a neighboring property owner if they, if you think that a tree or a branch or something else from their, their property is creating a hazard in your yard, you can, you can go through that process, and it would be best be discussed with your insurance company and, you know, handled that way, because there are notification requirements and things like that.
And it sounds like including the citation of the city code, that it can't be within six feet of the property line, bolsters the case with your insurance company about what the neighbor needs to do.
So that would be our first line of thought, the city arborist, to see if it's actually within the six...
Contact the city arborist, right? First.
There's also, if it's truly a vacant lot, there's also rules in the city code about how high growth can be that's not woody vegetation, and I don't know if bamboo qualifies as woody vegetation, so there's, there's something there also, where if it's, if it's a vacant lot, if it's not actually a lot that has a house on it.
It has a house on it.
A bird sanctuary. It has a bird sanctuary and a driveway in the bamboo.
Let me just say that I've already drawn this question to the attention of the city arborist, because I sent him an email yesterday, because not only is it encroaching on your property, the side of the house, the yard that runs next to the Service Road, the bamboo is laying in the street, and makes it hard, if not impossible, for vehicles to get down your Service Road, as you know. So, so that matter has been pointed out.
Great, thank you. I had the misfortune of having one of my, a limb of one of my trees fall on my neighbor's car, and I thought my insurance would cover it, because where, where I came from, your homeowner's insurance would cover such a thing, but here, they consider it an act of God. But one of the things that I, that I learned in that process is that if I had been negligent in any way regarding the tree, then I would have had liability. So I think when Darrell's talking about, talking to your insurance company, they can talk to you about the Maryland state laws around negligence and what people should know that their, their tree is. So they told me that if I had gotten an opinion by the arborist that my, my tree was dead, for example, or if you could see that my tree was leaning in a dangerous manner, then I, my insurance would have paid for it, but that's a concept, I think, that's worth pursuing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bakri, I live at the corner of, Paul Bakri, I live at the corner of Kingwood and Glen Side. We now have this scenic view in our yard of Mount Glen Side, which is about a 10-foot-tall pile of snow, which I think will be gone in May. I have two questions. First of all, first of all, I want to thank the Public Works people and everybody, I, they're, just the amount of work that went into managing this incredible snowstorm, I can't imagine the hours that people have put in and the work that's been done, and I'm very grateful for all of the work that was done to try to make this, I don't want to say manageable, survivable, whatever it was. So thanks to everybody who put in all that work and all those hours. Two quick questions, maybe not quick. In terms of plowing, the plowing that I saw being done, and I'm on one of those tertiary, third-tier, Kingwood is a third-tier street, Glen Side, I think, is a second-tier, the plowing that I saw done, I believe was all being done by city equipment.
And city staff, is that correct?
We've had contractors.
And contractors, right. Was there no support for the clearing of streets being provided by the county? Why not?
We, we own the streets, we maintain the streets, we clear the streets.
Okay, but we also pay county taxes. So, so if I'm paying county taxes, part of the services that those, people who live in the county who are outside an incorporated area, I assume their roads are cleared by the county. Is that correct? Okay. Those people pay taxes for those services, they get that support. We pay county taxes as well as city taxes. Why are we not being provided with that support as well?
I'll turn to the city manager, who has better knowledge of the county tax rebate.
The city receives a payment, ma'am, that is known as a tax duplication payment, often referred to as a rebate, from Montgomery County for a variety of services that are considered duplicative, and road maintenance would be one of those. There is a very complicated formula that basically calculates the county's per-lane-mile cost for things such, that includes snow plowing, and the city... And the city receives a payment from the county each year based on our number of lane miles times that lane mile cost is calculated. So it's been about, I'm just going off memory here, but I think the most recent figure, ma'am, that I can recall is about $442,000 a year in terms of a road maintenance payment from Montgomery County.
So there are formulas that are supposed to cover these kinds of things. We have maintained for a long time that those formulas are not correct, that we don't get the proper rebate, and we've been attempting to get those formulas changed. The city manager has been on the joint task force that has county and municipal representatives. Been working on this for two and a half years, I believe. The final report is...
I just got a revised draft from the county on Friday, so I'm in the process of reviewing that. So I would imagine that would be filed with the county executive. It was a county executive-appointed task force, probably within the next 30 days, is my hope.
Also, the county didn't spend nearly the resources that we did either, plowing streets. If we had relied on the county to plow our streets, it would have been a much slower response time.
I'm not suggesting that they should do it instead of. I'm suggesting that they should do it in addition to.
Even if that were the case, they wouldn't have gotten to us in a timely manner anyways because we had the streets, we had tier-three streets plowed, even the ones that were problematic, like in my ward, Belford and Cheney and Lower Conway. I imagine the service street that the woman was speaking of as well. They didn't get to those for a couple days after we had, you know, around their first plow.
I may just add that there is a specific provision in county law that any municipality only receives a payment if the county is not providing service within its boundaries. So unless it's under a mutual aid type agreement, for example. If we were, there was an expectation on the part of Tacoma Park that the county would come in and have responsibility for clearing our streets, under county law, they would not be providing a payment to the city any longer. And this has become an issue for some of the municipalities where there's joint county and municipal police departments, for example, and they don't receive any payment from Montgomery County. So that's the flip side of it. I think if we were relying on the county to provide service, they would have a legal basis for not making any payment whatsoever.
So legally, joint operations are discouraged monetarily?
Well, yeah, I would say that's correct. If you think about it, the idea is that it's a duplicative tax payment, that we're being reimbursed for the fact that the county is not providing service within our corporate boundaries. If they are providing service within the corporate boundaries, then they would not be making a payment any longer. There are some exceptions in terms of, you know, general operating agreements, such as Gaithersburg Senior Center, but those are very rare.
You've ventured into a...
A very messy, complicated area.
In essence, we're subsidizing the county residents through our duplicative taxes.
And it's not anything we're happy with.
Okay, I got you. Well, I still have some more questions about that, but maybe I'll bring those to another meeting another time and other ways that that might be approached, because I don't think I quite get, anyway. Okay, second question. We were one of the houses that went for a number of days with no electricity. I'm sure there are other people here for whom that was true. And as we were going into our fourth night with no heat, and we could see our breath, and the house temperature was 30-something degrees, and we fled to a hotel. Again, I recognize that this was an enormous storm and terribly complex and incredibly demanding in terms of managing the consequences. I made a couple of phone calls to various people. I think I left a rather frantic message for you at one point, Mayor Williams. Not frantic, but kind of frustrated. Pepco, again, I know that there were huge demands for them. But the question that I have and continue to, had been and continue to have is, and having talked to some people now back at work who have affirmed this, there were people who lost power whose powers were restored within a matter of hours. And there were people who lost power whose power was not restored for days. And asking this question, you get a lot of stuff about grids and distribution points and yada, yada, yada. And it's not convenient for us, and these are this, and in fact, I was told point-blank, we service first the points where we will restore the most people fastest. I understand that. And that that's politically smart for Pepco to be able to say, you know, we restored 20,000 houses, households this, you know, today or whatever. My question for you all, you're not responsible for Pepco, but one of the reasons, excuses that I heard repeatedly was, we may not be able to get to your neighborhood because of plowing, or lack of plowing, or a lack of access. Okay? And I guess my question is, how does the city and/or the county, but probably the city, coordinate with Pepco in terms of, you can't use as an excuse to not get to these people because that street has been plowed? Does Pepco communicate with you? Do you communicate with Pepco in terms of, yeah, you can get to that street? I mean, we could see a line that was down. My husband walked the block, and he could see a line that was down. It was a matter of bringing a truck in. He's got a lot of electronics, electrical background. It was a matter of bringing in a truck, pulling the line up and reattaching it, which finally happened. We lost power Friday evening. Okay? And going into our fourth night, Monday night is when we left the house. We came back Tuesday, there was power on Tuesday. We have people in our neighborhood, elderly, we have people who have young children. How do people get restored in three or four hours and other people go for three or four days?
My sense is that that kind of coordination you're talking about, to make sure that if there's power down, that the plowing has taken place, so that there isn't that excuse, was taking place, but my sense is it was taking place later in the storm than it wasn't at first. And I'm looking at the acting chief, because I know you were doing some of the coordination with Pepco, so maybe you can provide a little detail on that.
I can tell you, as I was involved in a lot of the activity at the county's emergency operations center that deals with these issues, some of these will probably come up as after-action items. Initially, we had a lot of difficulty getting information from Pepco about specific locations in which power had been out for, say, more than two or three days, getting specific information about things in the city at Tacoma Park that had happened. I eventually was successful at getting some information, and the number was not as, according to their records, was not as significant, I think, as a lot of people may think. There was a lot, as a lady mentioned, there was a lot of power that was restored in a fairly rapid period of time. Their initial plan was that they tried to restore power to the largest areas that they could get to. The explanation that you would have gotten would have been something about feeders that were down.
Distribution grids, feeders, blah, 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 blah.
They had divvied up outages in three sizes. They had sizes of less than, say, 50 people. They had sizes of, say, 50 to 1,000 people, and then outages that were covering more than 1,000 people. And their first priority initially in the first part of the storm was to restore power to areas that had outages of greater than 1,000 people. And there were a significant number of those countywide. So Pepco's resources were more than strained, is a way to put that. After the first storm, though, they recognized, in preparation for the second storm, they recognized that they had different types of problems. They had not only these large areas to deal with, they had fewer of them at that point, but they had a number of people who had been out of power for a long period of time. And the expectation was that the second storm was gonna be as severe as far as power outages. Thank goodness that didn't occur. But they then created two divisions of Pepco units addressing these problems. They split it to one division handling the large outages and another division trying to address the outages that had been in place for great periods of time. So they made an effort at that. I think Pepco will be the first to say that their abilities were not where they liked to see them. They had difficulty keeping real-time information about all of the locations that were out of power. At some point, they tried to get that revised by encouraging people to call again if they were still out of power.
18 times.
I know it's a difficult thing for an end user to realize that, you know, sometimes they have to call multiple times to make sure they're still on the radar with a company like Pepco.
And was there any coordination with our public works plows in terms of making sure that those areas could be gotten to once we knew what they were?
I can say there were a lot of discussions about places in the county where Pepco felt they couldn't get, and there was a lot of effort to make sure that that was occurring. At that point, it had already been, pretty much my assessment, that there were very few places in the city that they couldn't get because our plowing operations were days ahead of the county. Just to put it in perspective, the county didn't even embark upon residential plowing efforts until Monday about noon. So think about that. We had hit every one of our streets probably once or twice by Sunday, you know, early morning Sunday. So we were days ahead of the county in plowing into the residential areas.
Yet another reason why we should not, we should not have... And again, I don't hold you, you know, this is not Pepco. I don't hold you responsible. My question is, how do we communicate with Pepco? How do we coordinate to them, you know, so that they can't say, "Sorry, we can't get to your neighborhood," when clearly they could?
We have kind of an informal clique up there at the emergency operations center. It's myself and a couple other of the municipal representatives, and this is an action item we're gonna work on.
We have people who had power out in Ward Two, primarily on Elm and also on Garland Avenue. And Elm had some spotty plowing because the kids had sledded the downhill part of the street, and it was pretty snow-packed. And I talked to Daryl about that quite a bit to get the front loader to go up that. We also had a wire down across Garland Avenue, and so our plow actually didn't go down in front of the part of the street where the outages were in the low 7,200 block of Garland Avenue. And so I called Daryl and talked to her about that, and also communicated with the city manager and the acting police chief to let them know. And the end result was that the street got plowed to make sure that we could get the service trucks to it. And then neighbors helped identify elderly and disabled people who might need assistance, and the police went out to attempt to assist them. And I think the other thing that is important here is preparation, but also there was response that happened in the moment. And one of the interesting things in Ward Two is that I got calls from residents who had places for other people to stay. And so then we communicated that back out on the listserv. So I had volunteers call me from the Forest Park area. I had volunteers call me from the immediate Saskia area, right around where I'm at. Volunteers called me from Long Branch. So I go, and they didn't want to put their name and address out on the listserv, but they gave it to me. And then I put out on the listserv, if anybody needed housing, please communicate with the other neighbors. And we did a little bit of door-knocking to people, and I think that there was a good community response in those areas.
And informed their kids to other people, and yeah, so, yeah.
I would just say, my assessment is that if Pepco's telling you they can't get to a street because it's not plowed, or can't get to the issue because Tacoma Park hasn't plowed, I think that's a total excuse.
Well, I never heard Tacoma Park doesn't plow. I've heard a series of excuses.
Yeah, I would just say on that one in particular, because not only were we ahead of the game in a situation in my ward where there was a downline and a tree fire, Pepco came to repair it. The street wasn't plowed sufficiently, and within about 15 minutes, the skid steer was there, and within 45 minutes, they could get up there to solve the issue. So the idea that they couldn't get somewhere because Tacoma Park wasn't ready to plow is just, to me, an excuse that maybe it was true in other parts of the county, but I don't think that was your situation. I think it was much more that it was a small number...
You know, we've been to X address, and we couldn't get to your...
Right.
But there was just a series of general excuses. And the one that relates specifically, again, you're not responsible for Pepco. The one that I'm raising here is, what is the relationship between, you know, communicating about what's accessible and what's not, and Pepco saying, "We can't get to your neighborhood. We can't fix the line." Is there a communication line where they do know that streets are accessible? And, you know, I mean, for example, if I'm getting that... Now, there's also stuff about grids and distribution points and all this other stuff. And I understand that it's politically expedient for them to be able to say, "We restored 20,000 houses instead of 50 houses." But again, somebody who's been out of power for three or four hours is not in the situation of somebody whose house is 30 degrees and, you know, hasn't had a hot meal or slept for four days.
It sounds like part of the after-action that Captain Corsi... I was used to lieutenant, so... Is gonna pursue, is making sure that in addition to Tacoma Park's information being available to Pepco, other municipalities and the county's information is gonna be there so that Pepco doesn't have that excuse anywhere, that they know that they've got the right information to contact the people so that if they've got a problem, they'll have somebody out there so that they don't have to leave. And Commissioner Seaman's had something, and Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you. I think this is really valuable to have this discussion about our recent disaster. I call it a disaster. It was close to a disaster, at least. And I don't want to stifle that conversation, but I also wanted to remind everyone that the discussion that we'd like to also hear tonight is about Ward Six and what the issues are in Ward Six beyond just the last two weeks, because I think there are a number of things that I've heard from people individually, and I encourage you all to keep those in mind, too. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, in regard to the outage on Kingwood, I was talking to several people who were affected, and the Pepco outage map online, because I had power, I could therefore access my Wi-Fi in my house, bore no relationship to the actual situation. It indicated that there was less than five units out in this particular section of Tacoma Park, and that never changed from one day to the next. I kept thinking, oh, well, let's see what they've made progress in the last 24 hours. It's the same stuff. And I think the gentleman I was talking to who lives at Kingwood and Glen Side said that his count, there was about 20-some, at least 20 houses that were affected in this 72-hour outage. Power came on about 9:30, I think, or 10 o'clock Monday night.
We were home. We came back from the state of...
Yeah, yeah. So it's hard to get, I mean, I think this is something, Captain Corsi, that in the after-action, we need to kind of figure out. I mean, what's the use of the outage map if it's just completely wrong when people who I talked to from that area said, "Oh, we've called many, many times. We keep calling and they keep..." Some people had conversations with live individuals at Pepco, it just wasn't recordings. But it never changed, the outage map. So, you know, that doesn't give you much hope. That's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Lance Pruitt. I live on Kingwood Drive, near New Hampshire Avenue. And my concern is a little bit more long-range than our current snowfall, but I wanted to ask first if traffic calming issues in Ward Six are on the agenda for tonight. If so, I'll hold off my questions. If they're not, so then I'm gonna ask. So my concern is that being a frequent pedestrian around Ward Six, that excessive speed and traffic violations that occur make it relatively unsafe for pedestrians, and I know we're all aware of that, and that's why the traffic calming is on the map to begin with. But tonight was a very good example of fear that I have for the future in that the traffic on the major arteries was extra-heavy tonight from the snowfall, and so the cut-through traffic was also extra-heavy. And I know that this spring, they're calling for repaving of New Hampshire Avenue. And my hope was, and my question is, will the traffic calming measures be in place prior to that repaving? And if not, is there anything that can be done to limit the traffic violations that occur in the city during that time? Thank you.
Do you have that? I was thinking, Sarah, I might have the answer to that, but is it you?
Well, there's several traffic calming measures that the council had approved, and the community had participated in that evolution and discussion, and some have been installed and some are waiting to be installed. There was a raised intersection that was...
Well, there's several traffic calming measures that the council had approved, and the community had participated in that evolution and discussion, and, and some have been installed and some are waiting to be installed. There was a raised intersection that was installed at Glen Side and Merwood. There was a speed hump installed, I'm going to blank on the name, but it's in the packet that you have there.
Between Ann Avenue and Kirkland Avenue.
Yeah, and another one on Merwood, which was a separate-
And Merwood Avenue between Glen Side and Wildwood.
Yeah, a separate process, a petition process that went through. There are three traffic circles that have yet to be installed. Part of the limitation at this point is that it requires excavation of the street and concrete pouring, and you can only do that during months of March to November or October generally. So, once March comes along, we should be able to get two of those traffic circles installed. Those would be the two along Wildwood, I would anticipate sometime in the March-April timeframe. There's a third traffic circle that is intended to be a little bit larger. It will need to be designed and engineered prior to installation because it's a fairly complex intersection at Kirkland and Kennewick Avenues. So, we're currently, that issue will be coming before the council in terms of a contract award for design services, and once the contract is approved, then we'll, the city will begin discussions with that firm to design that traffic circle. I would not anticipate that to be done before the end of, or sometime in June if, if everything goes well. My understanding from the last discussion I had with the state highway folks is that they were anticipating resurfacing in March. So, depending on how their process goes, I think they got, were pretty well on track for the previous work that they did, which was some storm water improvements and some sidewalk and handicap ramp and pedestrian safety improvements. They're clipping pretty well along on those, that aspect of the work. So, I anticipate come March, you'll see the milling and paving of that road. That project itself will be onerous when it's going on, but it'll be fairly short-lived. It'll take them three, maybe five days at the most to mill and the same number of time to, to pave. Likely, that will happen at night for the paving. I don't know what they've got planned for the milling. So, it'll be an interruption of maybe two weeks if all goes well, and one contract follows quickly behind the other. I don't anticipate that state highway would let them mill the street and not rapidly pave it, but we have had that problem in some others. Yeah, we have had that problem in some other areas, so hopefully that will not be the case. So, I hope that answers your question.
That also sounds like it's a heads-up for anybody who lives on New Hampshire of the service road that be prepared for some nighttime work.
I'll, I'll throw in too that the police department's aware that this project's going to occur. We're aware that it'll probably have some, some bleed-over effect as far as cut-through traffic in the neighborhoods. We're pretty good about assigning proactively traffic enforcement details to our patrol officers to handle those things, but it never hurts to get a, a reminder or a request from a citizen. Many of us, you know, our phone numbers and emails are available on the city website. If not many of you know Kathy Plevy, and if you were to shoot an email or reply back to one of her emails or something like this, "Hey, look, we're having a problem on such, such a block. Please consider some enforcement there." Kathy's an excellent taskmaster and keeps us on track on a lot of those issues, and that would be a great way to get that information to us.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Sendas. I live at 1200 Kingwood Drive, right at the corner where all the bus stops are, so you know the house. I'm also concerned about the traffic. It's really fast, like tonight. Any overflow from New Hampshire, as he said. But I had noticed there was a sign at the end of Wildwood on Carroll during, they had put it temporarily, saying no turns during four to six or five to seven, and then it went away. I don't know if that was a trial. It had, it was like a no, no left turn from Carroll onto Wildwood. I, I saw it at some point. I don't know if it was a white and black sign, I was like, this is-
It was a test.
It was a test.
You're testing the traffic.
So, I wonder how the test went, because I thought it was the greatest idea. I said, "Okay, if nobody can turn here, and then you're, you have the speed bumps and all the circles, maybe the children could walk because there's about five bus stops or on, just on that one road." Most of the bus stops are on Wildwood. So, I was also wondering about that. And the second issue was, I'm a big stickler about how things look, and Ward Six is not clean. It's not clean, too many cars. One house has 10 cars. The way that you all repaired the roads with the little sticky, I don't know what you call it. What's it called?
Crack filling.
Yeah, crack filling. It's, it helps, I guess. It was a good patchwork, but it's, the whole Ward Six is patched. There's about, I think, a couple blocks that got really well paved, and otherwise you just have sticky road. And if it's hot and you're walking the dog, you're stuck. And, and because I'm a walker, so I walk everywhere. I've seen the bamboo. That bamboo is, it's treacherous. It's up almost near the lights. It has grown that high, so I know what she's talking about, and it's, looks like very flammable. But overall, the look of the area, something happened with the code enforcement. It's not there. So, that's all my comments.
I, I know that as far as code enforcement in Ward Six, former council member Barry spent a lot of time always talking about code enforcement in Ward Six and trying to make sure that things were addressed. So, we, we always heard about that, and hopefully, things are getting better. Anything else? Well, thank you all very much, and, oh.
Let me just, if you're going to wrap up this section, let me just make one comment. I want to remind everybody that you have my email. If you've got these kinds of issues, let me know because I'm your guy, and I'm going to try and do my very best to get your information to the people that it needs to go to. It's a free country, and you can always send this direct information direct to the various, you know, to, to Barber or to the, to the police department. You don't need to go through me, but don't hesitate to bring things to my attention. And second of all, this piece that's, I guess, is sitting out on the table out there is a big fat report of information all about and just about Ward Six from the police department, from the housing department, from Public Works. And so, it's got a lot of information in there, and I'm probably going to learn some stuff myself by reading it. So, make sure you get a copy before you leave tonight.
Thanks again for coming, and hopefully, the next time you come to the building, we'll be back in the council chambers slash auditorium, which is in the process of renovation. And once that's finished and open, come by, take a look, see if there's something that you or a group that you might be part of might want to use that space. It's going to be a nice performance space for any number of community things, and we hope to see you back here soon. Thank you. We'll take a short break, and then we'll get back to our meeting.
Why don't you just eat dinner tonight?
Okay, we're now to the point where we would usually start the meeting after the Ward Six night, and so, we have council comments, and if we can be fairly brief with those. We have the, the, and we have two special session items to do, and the, for the legislative update, which is the first work session item, we have the, our lobbyists on the phone, so they're waiting to get to that item. So, if we can move through this fairly quickly. If I can just start out with a couple of things, I wanted to just mention that I'll be going to the Maryland Mayors Association meeting this week in Annapolis, which is Thursday and Friday. It was supposed to be last week, but like a lot of other things, was postponed because of the snow. So, if anybody has any particular things to, that need a little bit of thought or attention or contact in Annapolis, I will be there Thursday and Friday. And I was at the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Conference, a legislative committee today, and I just wanted to share a couple quick items from some bill discussion there. In fact, you know, I'll leave those until, until we talk about the legislative update. So, that's my comments. Who else has comments? Councilmember Clay.
Start with the trash pickup plan. I know our trash pickup plan is to go on the holiday schedule, but there's a lot of trash, and so, if we, we're thinking maybe in some instances, we might not be able to complete routes on, on given days. So, my request is that we start the next morning with the ones that we didn't finish that day, so we don't have people who have trash out on their curbs for two and three days at a time, if they, Public Works thinks that's feasible. Today, coming, I tried to come up Maple Avenue and cars behind us and watched one of the big buses, not the double-hinged buses, but one of the big buses and one of the little jitney buses from right on try to pass each other.
Oh, yes.
We saw it going on up the hill, so we stopped, and then people get PO'd behind us and like zip around us, and then realize, of course, we stopped for a reason because we're not morons. And then watched the jitney bus try to back down Maple Avenue, constantly trying to find a spot to pull out into that was wide enough then for the big bus to pass them on the side. And we finally flipped into somebody's driveway to a three-point turn and left, and watched out the back window as the bus had to back all the way around, down, and then, and then force all those cars that had piled up to back down. So, I was thinking that since Maple Avenue is a bus route, that even if we couldn't, you know, I don't, we can't plow the whole thing curb to curb, but maybe we could at least come up with some designated places where the double bus, where the buses can reasonably pass each other. I got a letter today about firehouse construction and safety along the sidewalks, and when they first installed that fence and they brought it all the way out past the, essentially to the curb line, their excuse was that there was a big pit on the other side of it, and therefore, they had to bring the line out to the fence. But there's no longer a pit there, they filled it all in, and they've got porta-johns in that area, they're using it for storage of materials, and then I've noticed that the contractors, before the snow came, were just essentially parking over what was the sidewalk and using the public right-of-way for parking space plus, you know, three feet of their car out into Carroll Avenue. And I, I don't think that's necessary. I think that it's more of a priority to create a safe sidewalk along there because the, in essence, people don't cross the, the, the light at the junction to get over to the other side of Carroll from Ethan Allen, because you're walking along the, the co-op side of Ethan Allen. And then to stay on sidewalk, you have to cross over that kind of funky double light to get over to where the Gladrags place used to be, and then walk along, along that area and then cross over Philadelphia again, and people prefer to just stay on that sort of nice widely poured sidewalk that we had. So, I think we should revisit that with the people. I don't think that they should be able to park their cars on Carroll Avenue, I think that's dangerous. I think we should be able to clear enough for a sidewalk, and they should move the porta-potties and their, and their storage space. Snow, what can I say about snow? Can't say enough about the Public Works Department, I'm sure everyone else is going to say it, so let me focus on some other issues. Thing about snow and any kind of emergency is it's all in the preparedness. You know, if real estate is location, 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 disaster is prepare, prepare, prepare. And I got a lot of calls from people that made me think about the ways that people aren't prepared for disasters. And I got calls from people who didn't have enough medicine, and I myself ran out of pet food, because I thought of all the other things, I didn't think about my pets. And so, I think it would be great when we do our, our after-action debrief to think about how we might put together a community model for Tacoma Park. I know that Citizen Corps has a model, but I think it would be nice to do like a neighborhood academy for people in Tacoma Park, where we have the people who are interested in becoming cert volunteers, be able to participate that, where we can have the neighborhood watch folks learn more about that, and also work on building more community leadership essentially across our wards. It's some interesting conversations with people about that this week, and also people who are looking, we talk about how we go to the neighborhood associations because we want them to give us feedback about traffic calming and things like that, but we don't really have a mechanism to make sure that we have strong and active and engaged neighborhood associations, and maybe this kind of a, maybe a neighborhood academy is the way to engage that. In my ward, we had great neighbor-to-neighbor response, which is what you want in a disaster. Communication from the city staff was very helpful. The, the more communication, the better, with maybe one exception. We reported that we had snow plows down, and people assumed that we had broken snow plows when the event started, which wasn't the case. Snow plows break in the event of working on things, and, and so, some miscommunication got out, but it was great to have a constant feed of communication from the administration, administrative staff. I got lots of compliments about my communication, but it's really your communication, and I was just passing it on, so I'm going to pass on all those compliments. And, that's it. Oh, wait a minute, jelly. You all have jelly. Piper made the jelly. This is, this is grape jelly that Piper made in California with California organically grown Concord grapes, Hawaiian sugar, and Suregel pectin. And, and we brought back 72 of these jars, so you each get one.
Sounds like they give each get two. Wow, you and Piper were busy.
So, Piper pack these up for me to bring to you all tonight, so I hope you enjoy them.
Piper packed a pack of-
I know. Purple, uh-
Yeah. Councilmember Robinson.
Well, thanks, Piper. That's really great. That was my first question, is what's the jam?
We're never in a jam.
There are two issues. One is storm-related and one's not. The storm-related one has to do with contractors, and I don't expect an immediate response, but I would like to have a sense of how contractors are picked, because I've had some questions about how, how we choose contractors. So, maybe at a future time, Darrell, you can fill us in on the process for choosing contractors. And the, the other thing I have to say is that I received a, a petition to, to put a sidewalk in along Ethan Allen between the junction and going towards Jackson, and it's signed by pretty much everybody along the strip who would like a sidewalk. Of course, Ethan Allen's in the state road, and we don't have control over that road, and so, that's another sticky issue, but I spoke briefly with, with Ms. Braithwaite, who said that we're working on a procedure to, to respond to petitions for sidewalk installation. And so, that's another thing in the future that maybe we can come back to, okay?
And if I can just say, remind me when I'm covering what I did today at the legislative committee, that there's a bill that pertains to that.
Great.
Councilmember Siemens.
I thank you, Mayor, and I'll try to be brief, but I'm doubtful. First of all, I would like to let everybody know that Pat Lovelace has moved back into his home from the hospital. He was suffering some serious medical problems, and he asked that I solicit prayers for his continuing recovery. As for the snow, I would like to thank Darrell and the Public Works Department for all the work that they did, and the many, many hours that they put in when everybody else was enjoying the days off from work. Our police department and Public Works employees were putting in extra effort, and I'm sure there were some other city staff who I also would like to recognize for that. Also like to thank Mayor Williams for pulling together a, an ad hoc food program for the city workers who were working those long hours and going hungry many nights. And that was a great community effort, and I really appreciate you doing that. You know, that's not to say that it weren't some issues, and I think Darrell probably knows better than, than the rest of us, because everybody's been contacting her with all the different concerns with the snow removal, and I'm confident that we're going to learn from this and be able to provide better service next time. There are some things that I think the council could do, such as, I think we ought to look at our sidewalk regulation on, on clearing of sidewalks, because there is a point in time where it becomes impossible to do that, and I think the regulation could be tweaked to account for that and make, make sure that, you know, give forewarning to the residents that, that at some point, we can no longer expect you to clear your- at some point, we can no longer expect you to clear your sidewalk if Public Works is having to use that as a place to store the snow off the streets. There are some ongoing issues that I'm hopeful Public Works is addressing, a couple of those have been mentioned tonight, but in addition to Maple Avenue, single lane with the buses, there's a problem on Ritchie Avenue. Now the schools are reopened, with the school buses coming down Ritchie. It was very difficult today, and so if there's anything we can do to get at least some pull-off locations in there, if not widening the street. The pedestrians continue to be at risk along our streets, and that would be a good idea for community members to do, as we heard tonight from one of the ward six residents, to go out and actually try to help with clearing of some of the bus stops so they have areas to stand and wait for the buses. Also, I've noticed that a lot of the, there are very few fire hydrants within the city that have been cleared, and I hope that city residents realize that the fire hydrant that's near your house doesn't have to be cleared by the person who owns that property, it's your house that may need to have that service, and so you could pitch in to help to clear those fire hydrants, so it doesn't delay in the event of an emergency. And then lastly, I'd just like to say that, you know, I called it earlier tonight, I called this little snow event a disaster. It was really small, as compared to some of the disasters we've been warned that could be coming down the pike for us, and I think that what I learned from this is that we are very ill-prepared for a disaster. We have people who suffered because of the power outages, the Meals on Wheels was unable to make deliveries to some of our more vulnerable neighbors, so many of them had to go without the food that they normally receive, and many of the neighborhoods were unaware of where their most vulnerable neighbors lived, who really needed their assistance. I think that most people in the community would reach out if they knew somebody needed to help, but not, that hasn't been very well organized. We have an emergency preparedness committee that I think is focused on maybe some important things, but I think they've been more focused on things from a government perspective rather than a community perspective. And so I would like to suggest that we either refocus the committee, since it is a council-appointed committee, and we have community leadership of that committee, or we form a community emergency preparedness committee that is charged with identifying and coordinating the establishment of local shelters. The county has, we have depended on the county for sheltering our residents, but that was, did not work well during this event. And I guess I'll leave it at that, I think that this council needs to take action on this, as we've heard from some of the other council members tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Sturrock.
Yes, I too want to thank both sanitation crews and the police for their efforts during the storms, and the rest of the city staff who've put in a lot of extra time on this. You know, it's one thing to say you're doing a job, and it's another to actually do a really good job, and I think that's where we were. I'm also very proud of the people at Tacoma Park, because I saw myself and heard about many examples of people in Tacoma Park helping their neighbors, whether it was helping to dig out a car for somebody who needed to go someplace, or just simply entertaining the, you know, "you can use my lawn for the local sledding" kind of activity, that made it bearable day after day for families with kids or people who needed help. There was a tremendous amount of questioning about, you know, "I haven't seen so-and-so, do you know if they're all right?", checking on people who had power out, it was very impressive. Of course, we could always be more prepared, that's a given. I actually thought the preparations were, in general, quite good. I'm sure we've learned some things, we'll do things a little better next time. I have a couple things that we might think about going forward. One is that we have a number of rather large snow piles, we might think of them as snow mountains, and those need to be dealt with. Some of them are in harmless locations, and some of them are making intersections quite dangerous, because they're blocking visibility, for example. And those need to be taken care of. Then there are snow piles on sidewalks, and the particular change I would like to see in the sort of sidewalk rules, if we will, regulations, is that when it becomes obvious that even if you cleaned your sidewalk, there's no way someone could go up the street because there's enormous, some enormous snow mountain, making it essential then that people have to walk into the street in order to get around it, I think we need to figure out what to do about those kind of unusual circumstances. And also, the sidewalks along, while the sidewalks in Tacoma Park might get cleared, those are the streets, those streets that border Silver Spring or elsewhere have a special problem, because they'll either have to coordinate with the state, get them to plow the road and not dump all the snow onto the sidewalk, as happened in my ward a couple of times, or to enforce, we had an unfortunate, I won't name any names, although I guess Sarah's left, so she knows who this particular landlord is, one of my least favorite landlords. He hired a crew to clean one of his properties in Silver Spring, and they dumped all the snow onto the Tacoma Park side on a sidewalk that is used by people waiting for the bus, the big port and bus stop, and as well as kids. So this, you know, equipment driver dumped all the snow, and when the resident suggested that this really wasn't a good idea, especially since he had just spent hours clearing the darn thing, he was treated with a string of expletives by this guy. Of course, it didn't sit well when we clarified that it wasn't the county drivers who had done this, but this landlord's crew that had done it, maybe even more angry. But anyway, the point is, going forward, we need to think about a couple of things, like how to clear the sidewalks where there are major kid bus stops, and there's a number of those. And we also need to, I want to reinforce the idea of plowing the streets with bus routes. I have a couple in my ward, particularly Kennebec, where the 25 goes, that it's very narrow when there isn't a flake of snow on it. It's really impossible now, because it's extremely difficult to clear, because for one thing, there are cars parked on one side of the street, so it makes it difficult to clear, and then the buses go by all the time and make it a mess. And for some reason, the ride-on is using those large buses instead of the smaller buses, so when two of those buses try to pass each other, as you were describing, it is pretty exciting. And I do ride the bus quite a bit, so I get to see this in action. So I think doing some extra efforts going forward, plowing the bus routes would be really good, including, of course, Maple Avenue, which is a major bus route. I'll stop there, that's good.
Councilmember Ray. Couple of things. One, I want to also say a huge thank you to Public Works and the Police Department. In my short time in the council, a little more than two years, I have to say that I've gotten more positive feedback related to the city's response to this weather event, I know Bruce Hare hates that word, or storms, than anything else that's gone on in the city in my little overtures in the council, so I think that's a big credit to the city staff. And in particular, I wanted to, just because no one else has mentioned it, single out the city arborist, who I think maybe didn't sleep for four or five days, because I heard stories of him personally with a chainsaw and elm removing a tree, and then being at the site of one tree fire on Tuhup, and coordinating Pepco to repair that, and then on Birch, you know, a few days later, so big ups for him, I would say a big thank you to him. You know, there was a mention earlier that there weren't any casualties related to the storm, and there actually was one unfortunate death of a man in my ward, who was an older man who was shoveling, and had a heart attack and was rushed to the hospital, and unfortunately didn't survive, Charlie Saub. And, you know, I don't think there's anything that the city could have done differently for residents, but it's one of those unfortunate occurrences that happens in an event like this. Similar to Ruben, I would like to get a sense of like what the plan is for the next week or so, because there are these snow piles and there's some prioritization. Unfortunately, we're not going to have a few days of 50-degree weather anytime soon to melt it all. And connected to that, you know, I know there is Maple Avenue, and I am partially responsible for the situation on Maple Avenue, because they started to clear Maple Avenue with a contractor with a front-end loader, and the solution was to, you know, that was the priority for what the contractor was told, and that snow was dumped onto the sidewalks, and in some cases was going to actually strand people on the western side of Maple in their house, because they're up on a hill. So I did ask that that be stopped, at least until we could figure out some other plan. I think the other alternative is to do what we've done in some other areas in the city, which is to actually haul it out, which I know is expensive, but I'm not quite sure what you do in that situation, also because Maple Avenue, not only is it a heavy bus route, but it's also heavy pedestrian for adults and kids, so then you have the individuals walking in the street with the cars, which is a problem. The thing that the residents did do on Maple Avenue, and I think to a T, almost everybody has agreed not to park, not to insanely try and also park on Maple Avenue, given that it hasn't been, we haven't been able to plow curb to curb. Obviously, that situation was compounded by the fact that the county continues to use the large buses, which is in violation of the community agreement, that we would have small buses on Maple Avenue, because it's just not appropriate to have the large buses. I know they have legal challenges with trying to get those buses, the small buses that were broken replaced, but still, that's a compounding issue. I think in terms of the, you know, dealing with the preparedness for an event like this, I know that Wolfgang Murgner would be excited to have more people engaged and interested in participating in the Public Safety Committee. I think it's not...
The Emergency Preparedness...
Sorry, Emergency Preparedness Committee, we did away with the Public Safety Committee. Emergency Preparedness Committee, which I think is under-subscribed for its number of people, and he's a big proponent of preparing for events like this. And I think one of the interesting opportunities might be for cross-neighborhood connections, because I think within neighborhoods, people did a great job of being available and helping out their neighbor, and also if there's power outages, to take in people, to keep them warm, but often, you know, power goes out in a particular neighborhood, and therefore everyone who might know each other in the Penn neighborhood for a while, you know, for a big chunk of time, a bunch of the Penn neighborhood was out, and sort of, where are you going to go if all three or four streets surround you, and most of the people you immediately know well enough to be invited into their house are out? So there might be an interesting opportunity for some cross-neighborhood coordination there. I would love to have a debrief when we kind of sort out everything about the lessons learned for the council in a public forum, I think that would be great. I think the decision about the sidewalk clearing suspension was a smart one, based on the fact that we plowed over many sidewalks. But it is an interesting challenge, because I have got a fair bit of response, where people said, "Thank you for doing that. We appreciate it, given the fact that our sidewalk has eight feet of snow in front of it", but at the same time citing some people who never even lifted a finger to clear anything, any part of the sidewalk. They might have actually cleared their driveway, but didn't make any attempt to clear their sidewalk at all. So, you know, that's one of the situations where you'd like to be able to use a scalpel, sorry, a scalpel with the public policy, as opposed to sort of just the broad brush of postponing all of it. So, thanks.
And I'll just add one more quick thing on the great effort that the police and Public Works staff did in clearing these storms and dealing with all the consequences. A number of the people that I talked to in the community response for providing food and anything else that they could, was that people felt very strongly that they'd like to have an opportunity to personally thank the people who did a lot of that work. I had originally been thinking, gee, you know, it would be nice to have some recognition at a council meeting, and a number of people I talked to felt that it needed something more special than that. So what I'm hoping to do is that we can pull together something in fairly short order that is an exclusive event, just for a thank you for city employees, for all of the good work that's happened in the aftermath of these storms. I'm not quite sure what that would be, Darrell and I have talked a little bit. I'd also be happy to talk with the acting chief or the chief when he gets back, and see if we can pull together something. There were an awful lot of people who felt that they would like the opportunity to come down and personally thank folks for all the work they did.
I think it should include the chocolate fountain.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, chocolate fountain, yeah.
And t-shirts that say, "I conquered the blizzards of 2000".
And all of this will come from private donations.
I own a chocolate fountain.
Well, then it sounds like we're going to have a chocolate fountain. So, any other ideas? We'd like to pull this together fairly shortly, we don't want to lose sight of this whole thing, but we don't want to do it right away, so...
When the last snow melts.
Yeah, yeah, in celebration of the end of seeing that snow, or something. But any ideas, any volunteers for helping to put that together? We'd like to get the word out on that as soon as we can. And we'll move on, I don't think there are any additional agenda items, and I won't go over any future scheduling updates, so that we can get to public comment period, if there is any, on any other thing that isn't on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, what kind of city manager's comments?
I would just like to take the opportunity to personally thank the staff of Public Works, and police, particularly Darrell and Ed, who probably got more calls from me over that one-week period than we, than they probably have liked, but it was very helpful just to get the information from them, and also thank the council for trying to be a conduit to the community in terms of getting information out. Met with staff this morning, kind of for two purposes. One was to sort of put together the game plan for the next week or two, obviously there remains a lot of work to be done. One of the things we hope to be able to give the council tomorrow is some maps showing what the priority streets are for the immediate future, in terms of where we'll be focusing, in terms of trying to widen up travel lanes. We'll also hopefully have a map for you tomorrow, showing some of the public spaces around the parks, et cetera, that still remain to be cleared, so at least in your conversations with residents, you're able to share that information and hopefully give them some idea of what to expect in the next week or so. The other thing that we started touching on as a staff this morning is some of the lessons we learned, what we thought went well, some of the things where maybe we could have done a better job. We'll be continuing those discussions, I know both Darrell and Ed, excuse me, want to follow up on some of the issues I raised with their staff, and I do think it would be great in the near future to maybe have an opportunity to come back to the council, certainly after we meet with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, get their thoughts, and basically sort of do a debrief publicly. The only other thing I just wanted to note for the record is that the quarterly report is included in your packet. If the council has any questions after you have the opportunity to review that information, please just give me a call.
Okay. Then we will move on to our special session items. The first one is a single reading ordinance, ordering contract, implement community-based support groups for offenders.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, did you catch who? Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember...
I moved it.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Sturrock. Yes?
Good evening, city council members. Tonight, I'm here to make a recommendation to the city council to award a contract to Lead for Life, to implement support groups and training to offenders, with the primary focus on group counseling, life skills training, and community support. As you've probably seen your cover sheet, we were awarded $5,440 from the governor's office. Office of Crime Control and Prevention to implement these support groups this fiscal year. Specifically, the offenders that we would be serving could recently be released from prison or recently assigned to the Division of Parole or Probation. They're most likely to have charges such as assault, domestic violence, carjacking, drug charges, robberies, or possession of a firearm or a deadly weapon. Last year, we did conduct two of these groups. We piloted it last year, and we found it to be quite successful. There were a total of nine offenders under parole probation supervision who started the session. Seven out of those nine actually completed the session. It was a six-week session last year. And two out of those seven that completed the group were rearrested within the last year, but that is a 70% success rate. So we feel that was a good percentage. So I issued a request for a proposal, which we distributed to a network of social service providers in the Silver Spring area, and the proposal was also posted to the Tacoma Park website. And in response, we received one proposal. However, other organizations, individuals made inquiries, but nobody submitted, nobody else submitted a proposal. So members of our Oversight Committee met and we reviewed the proposal. They were representatives from the Division of Parole and Probation, the Silver Spring Regional Center, and also the State's Attorney's Office, and they recommended that we award the contract to Lead for Life Incorporated. They were the ones who actually did the pilot last year at a much reduced cost. The majority of the funds in the proposal will be expended on salaries for the group facilitators. Other expenses include partial cell phone charges for follow-up phone calls that the facilitators will make to the group participants, as well as for any kind of crisis intervention that might be necessary into assist in making referrals for those participating in the group. Also, some expenses will be used for office supplies. The total cost of each group session is actually $300, and for that, so for $300, we get two highly-trained mental health professionals to facilitate group counseling for an hour and a half. We plan to have eight offenders in each session, so technically, when you look at it, that's $37.50 per person, per session, which is actually a great rate for group counseling. So overall, work hours on the project Lead for Life proposed that they would work about 72 hours to successfully implement the entire project, and since we have the $5,440 from GOCCP, that equals $75.55 an hour to implement the entire project over the course of the remainder of this fiscal year. Specifically, with regards to some of the qualifications of our facilitators, one facilitator, he has his doctorate of education in counseling psychology, and the other one is an LGSW. She's a licensed graduate social worker and has over eight years of experience in managing and facilitating programs and activities in the mental health profession. So are there questions about, about the proposal?
Did you say licensed graduate social worker?
Yes, LGSW as opposed to an LCSW. So she's an LGSW that's currently under supervision to be an LCSW. Yeah, which means at the end of your MSW, you take a license, you take a test to get your licenses. Not all social workers do that. Quite a process.
Just was wondering, you said a 70% success rate. Do we know the numbers for offenders of this type who don't go through any sessions or any programs, like what their recidivism rate or rearrest rate is?
Right now, I know Montgomery County, the Division of Parole and Probation, the Montgomery County Field Office, they're starting to look at those numbers so we can see what it looks like globally. But all I really have right now is the national recidivism rate, which was compiled by the Bureau of Justice Statistics, and it's based on three years, not one year, and their rearrest rate is two-thirds of released prisoners will be rearrested within three years. But I personally don't feel comfortable comparing that directly to these local offenders.
Just a question. I guess I've heard the term ex-offenders rather than offenders, just to kind of encourage a shift in thinking.
I think that sort of depends on who you talk to as to what they would call it. There's been sort of, at least at the state level, there's been a change in terminology depending upon, really depending upon the appointed officials in those, that hold those offices.
So that kind of reminds me of other exes. There's, I have a friend who was a mayor in Mount Rainier, and I called him an ex-mayor one time, and he said, "No, it's a former, I'm the former mayor of Mount Rainier." And I think wives don't like to be called ex-wives. I think they like to be called former wives. Sorry. Former offenders, perhaps.
Any public comment?
Can I say something?
Oh, sorry.
The forgotten word down here, right?
I didn't see a hand waving.
There was no hand waving, so it's my fault, really. I guess I'm trying to figure out how the Lead for Life contract will fit in to what the CSafe program is doing. I mean, how does it, it sounds very, it sounds, I mean, it really is a sense, the essence of what CSafe has been focusing on for about the last year, which is, as you've explained it, working very personally with a set of these high-risk people who have been released.
Yes, exactly. Interestingly, that's exactly right. This, I think, really demonstrates how the shift in the CSafe program is switching from more of a community focus to individual offender, high-risk offender focus. So when I, I actually requested a little over $7,000 for this line item, and it was only cut by $2,000 from GOCCP, whereas police overtime money and community initiatives was cut much more significantly. Money I had for community initiatives, community events, was completely cut, whereas this was minimally cut. So I think this really does reflect the individual focus because from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention's perspective, communities don't commit crimes, people do. So that's why they want to focus these resources from, within the CSafe program on individual offenders.
How long does this Lead for Life contract go? Is it a date certain kind of thing, or is it just when they use up the hours?
No, it has to be completed June 30th.
So it's just a period of months. Then what happens after that? I mean, then this just stops?
Right, right. They're eight-week sessions. So we'll have a group of about eight offenders and their family members, friends, whoever their support is in the community is also invited to attend. And it'll be an eight-week session. At the end of the session, they'll get a completion, a certificate of completion, and then we're going to do a second session all before the end of June. And we were discussing, there might, we might be able to squeeze in a third session in there.
But then after, after this grant is consumed, then there's no more services of this nature?
Right. It just depends on, I know that the federal government is issuing a, they just issued an RFP for ex-offender, for reentry support services to states, and the states themselves had to apply for that funding. It was, it was big money, you know, millions of dollars that each state could have received. And I know Maryland did apply for that funding.
So there's hope down there?
There's hope.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
But it would not be administered through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. It would be administered through the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mary, for bringing this. I think it's a great program. I wonder if we have looked at any mentoring programs to work in conjunction with this, where we have volunteer mentors from the community to actually pair up with former offenders to try to not only work through this program, but then continue with the individual on past the funding for this.
That would be wonderful. If you, if you have any people that would like to volunteer, I'd be happy to put them in touch with the lead facilitators, and then they could get started that way because the longer-term mentoring aspect is probably pretty important.
Is that something maybe we could do through the newsletter, Barb?
Any other questions or comments? Any public comments? Okay, then we will, this is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call her on?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is first reading ordinance authorizing installation of one or more speed homes on Sherman Avenue. Would Councilmember Robinson like to move that?
I would like to. Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on part of council? Any questions? Any public comments? Single reading ordinance, oh, first reading ordinance. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously as well. We will now move to the work session, which is the legislative update. And our, do we say lobbyists or do we say legislative associates? Hopefully are on the line.
Ann and Michelle, are you there?
Here.
I heard a voice. There are public policy partners.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, good evening. Given the travel and other constraints of the recent, based on the recent storm, we decided that having Michelle Douglas and Ann Seacott call in by phone made some sense for this evening. I did not want to have this item postponed another week because things are moving relatively quickly in the General Assembly, and there were a number of items that I wanted to make sure that you're aware of. And I think Michelle or Ann, I don't know which one wants to go first, but maybe you could just give an overview about, with the information that you, that I handed out that you had passed on earlier?
Sure. Will you speak up? This is Michelle, and Ann is also on the line with us. Before I go through the list of issues, I just want to let folks know that through the last week and a half, through all the craziness, we have been in constant contact with Suzie, and it's just amazing to me that she, through all of the storm stuff, has been completely responsive. So I just, I wanted to make sure that folks knew that she was staying in constant contact with everything that's going on in Indianapolis. So to run down some of the issues that I know are of interest to the council, I thought I would just run through the updates that I think you have in front of you, and then certainly open it up for any questions, discussions. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay. The first issue that you see on there is the issue of utility re-regulation, and I'm sure that many have seen in the paper that Chairman Derek Davis, who chairs the Health Economic Matters Committee, which is the health side committee that hears issues related to public service commissions and re-regulation, has emphatically stated that his committee is not going to move forward on that issue this year. So while there will, there are bills in, and there will be, certainly will be hearings and discussions, we don't expect any forward movement on that issue this year. It's something that might come back for more debate and discussion in a new term, so next year.
As a interruption here, part of the reason that this is a topic is that, you know, we have tried to do the aggregation, municipal aggregation of energy, and there was some interest again in that this year, primarily by some of the legislators who are very annoyed with what's going on with the utilities. But as we've heard now, it doesn't look likely that anything's really going to move on this one this year.
Ann, do you want to talk about just cause? Sure. Hi, folks. Thanks for letting us join, join you this way, this time. For, related to just cause eviction, it's been decided a few months back that unless there was some kind of significant change in the overall political environment, that it probably would not be worth pursuing the just cause eviction bill again. And one of the things we've been waiting for is the tenant work group that was established by the county council, and its recommendations and the hopes that its recommendations would include support for just cause eviction legislation and hopefully also get support then from the county executive. And while that group, we understand, has finished work, and I have been told by one member that they did endorse just cause eviction, the report has not officially been released, at least it hadn't before the snow. I don't know if it did last week. And it's the same kind of guessing thing. And then we haven't seen the actual report and any kind of official reaction from the county council or the county executive. We don't have anything, again, any significant change in the political environment to make us think that this is strategically, we're not, we're not well-placed strategically to move forward with the bill this year. And so I had conversations with Deleah Missire and her staff, Jeremy Crandall, and she has not backed off her commitment to wanting to work on the issue, her support for the issue. It's just a political reality that it doesn't look like this year, we're running out of time to get bills introduced, and it looks like it might be a building year as opposed to a year moving forward, which is what we had talked about the last time Michelle and I were there with you all in the city council.
On this one, just part of the thing that I found interesting was that, you know, Heather Missire has, has really pushed for having it again this year, and I think she's been a little bit disappointed that this support from the tenants, you know, just wasn't forward in a timely way for this year.
Can we come in with an hour?
No.
I honestly think that's a good thing because we're not going to pass this unless we have more of a grassroots strategy. So, you know, in the last week that we can possibly enter bills to enter a bill, you know, what will it look like? Well, I know you can amend them after the fact, but, you know, we need to make sure structurally we have a good bill, and I think it's great that the tenants' groups have worked on it, but, you know, last time CASA got involved, they were really more interested in the retaliation piece. I don't think we've talked to enough of the folks who do actual fair housing and tenants' rights litigation to see how that relates to that sort of litigation. So I think it's great that they have the report forward, but I think it's just the beginning of the work, and I think it's a, it's at least a one-year project. So I think what we should do is make a decision that after this legislative session ends to sit down and make that happen and get a strategy to do the networking and outreach that it's going to take to make this bill pass in the next year.
The next issue is civil marriage, and we have bills that are similar with the bills that were introduced last year. There are bills put in to allow same-gender civil marriage. Those bills have hearings coming up in, I believe, the beginning of March, March 3rd and March 4th. And there are two bills that have been put in, one of which has already been killed, that would prohibit the state from recognizing out-of-state same-gender marriages. The House bill had a very early hearing, was signaled by leadership in the House that it was not going to look favorably upon it. It's had a very quick death. It was one of the first bills that was killed, and so the Senate version that was just introduced this week will not see any more favorable light. But we do, what we do expect though this year are a lot of attempts by legislators who oppose same-gender marriage to find ways through other bills in both committee and on the floor to try to amend the issue of prohibiting out-of-state marriage for same-gender couples. We expect a lot of attempts to try to amend that onto other bills. At this point, you know, we're all still waiting for the Attorney General's opinion to come out, and obviously, a lot of this debate back and forth will get heightened if it- if and when that opinion comes out, if it comes out during legislative session. We hear updates on a regular basis, but we've been hearing updates since last June, and so far, nothing. So it's not a good guess for us to try to figure out when the Attorney General's going to release his opinion at this point. You know, we do expect a lot of maneuvering to try to get the issue of prohibition somehow attached to some bill. So that'll just be something that, you know, has, needs constant monitoring. Another issue that has been of interest, we know in the past, and will still be, is that of immigration. There are, there are a number of bills that have been introduced around immigration status. I wanted to pay your attention, one that I think has the possibility of moving forward, and it's Bill 227, House has a cross file, House Bill 1012. And this bill would require the Division of Corrections and the Division of Probation and Parole to include in an inmate's case record what their immigrant status is, if any. And so if the case record, as it comes to one of those two divisions, does not include any information about that, there to seek and find out what that person's immigration status is. And if they have an immigration status, then the bill would have either the Division of Corrections or the Division of Probation parole forward that information along with the charges that have been placed against that individual to Immigration and Customs Enforcement. And probably the idea is obviously to have people who excelled, who have any kind of conviction that would go against their immigration status. The thing to note about this bill is that on the Senate side, it is sponsored by a great majority of those who are in the Democratic leadership, and it had a bill hearing last week. It was the only committee that had bill hearings during the storm, and it had it on February night, and the bill does not have a fiscal note. So of all of the bills related to immigration, this is probably going to move this year.
I have a question.
There are a couple of, from last year, and they are House Bill 721, and it's cross file, Senate Bill 844, and then House Bill 343. Both of those bills were rejected in their original committee slash year, and I don't see that they would have any better fate this year. And then the last one I wanted to just bring to your attention is House Bill 866. And this is a bill that would require all law enforcement agencies throughout the state to get a training on the federal immigration law, and then to allow jurisdictions to enable the law enforcement agencies to carry out the functions of immigration officers. I don't think the bill has much chance, and the fact that it's been scheduled for a bill hearing right before crossover date on March 23rd pretty much indicates that it probably won't go anywhere. So of all the bills related to immigration, I think Senate Bill 227 is the most likely actually move.
Okay, and Councilmember Wright has a question about that.
Michelle?
We've had some discussions.
Michelle, hang on.
Around the issue of Ethan Allen Boulevard.
Can she hear us? Michelle?
About possible.
Keep talking, yeah.
Their office.
Michelle, can you s-
Putting in a bill.
Ann, can you get Michelle to stop?
I'm sorry?
Please.
Yeah.
We have some questions.
Councilmember Wright has a question.
No.
Councilmember Wright has a question about the immigration bill.
Sure. On Bill 227, is that basically saying that only for people who have been convicted of a crime, because it's both the State Division of Correction and the State Division of Probation, or is it someone who has even been charged?
You can extend the pause.
Okay.
I have a copy of it here, if you'd like to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, moving on to Ethan Allen, we have been having some discussions with Delegate Mazir's office about trying to come up with some kind of a solution to the problem, Ethan Allen. And we've had some discussions between Suzie and Jeremy Crandall and Delegate Mazir's office about perhaps putting in a bill, although it would be late, but using this as leverage to get the State Highway Administration to try to do some good about, about the paving of the boulevard. And the idea would be to really minimize the amount of roads that would be captured under this bill, and it would say that if the State Highway Administration has been maintaining a road that is not owned by the state, or owned by the state, for 20 years or more, before they turn the maintenance over to the actual owner, they need to make sure that the roadway is maintained. So it's, it's something that, you know, we've had some discussions about, and we'll need to make a decision about moving forward on that the next day or two.
Why don't I go ahead and explain for, for those who might be confused, there's, most of Ethan Allen and some of Philadelphia are shown on maps as being owned by the city of Tacoma Park, as opposed to the state of Maryland. The, the guess that we have is that when there was the threat to widen these roads decades ago, the city of Tacoma Park kept the ownership, although it became part of the numbered state route, state highway system. The state highway has maintained these roads for decades, and recently, they stopped doing maintenance work on sections of most of Ethan Allen, saying, oh, it's not our road. This was something that, obviously, we did not budget for to maintain. It took us, I don't know if Gail's still here, but it took us quite a lot of investigation about this. We still haven't seen all the firm documents, but we're thinking that that's actually correct, that we still own these sections of the roads. They recently repaved Philadelphia just a couple of years ago. Nevertheless, they've balked on doing anything about Ethan Allen. What the bill that we were suggesting be put in would say was that, basically, if it squatters rights or something, if state highway's been doing this for decades, they can't just walk away from it. That they, if they feel that it does need to be turned over to the landowner, in this case, the city, that they have to bring it up to a fair standard before it's turned over. The other option, and one that Heather Mazir's office has been working with Chris Van Hollen's office on, is to try to somehow piggyback on the stimulus package-funded renovation of New Hampshire Avenue to have the contractors go up Ethan Allen for a few blocks and get that work done at the same time. That's difficult to do from the bureaucracy of stimulus funding. Nevertheless, we're looking at, at several different ways to ensure that state highway would, somebody would fix this road in a timely way, because if it is kept on state highway schedule, I think it's scheduled for 2014, and there's just no way that Ethan Allen can last that long. And so we're, you know, the, you know, we've thought of, we've tried to be a lot of, be creative. Do we put speed, do we say, okay, it's ours, and we put speed humps out there, or we do road, you know, we change the configuration of the road or something. There are some reasons not to do that. Nevertheless, we're trying to bring some way for state highway to have that attention, and do appreciate Jeremy Crandall and Heather Mazir's office for trying to come up with something with us to get some attention to Ethan Allen. Jeremy, would like to get your sense about, should we put forward a late, basically a pretty late bill into the process? It's basically a statement to state highway, or should we just focus on working with Chris Van Hollen, or should we do both?
Thoughts? That's what we call it.
Well, Ethan Allen runs through War II excitingly, and, you know, I think we should do whatever we can to, to get that road fixed. It's terrible. I think it's outrageous that, we always come back to this issue of for the city to fix a problem that the state government won't fix, or that the county government fix, won't fix, which is really their ethical obligation, that it comes back to us having to expend money and take it on ourselves, when we know that they collect, as the woman pointed out earlier, and we all know, they, they collect taxes from us to do just this very thing. So I guess I would support going forward with the bill, but at the same time, I, I thought maybe you were reading my mind, but I was thinking, okay, if it's our street, then yeah, why can't we put speed bumps? I mean, what can we do to a street that they would hate to have us do? Well, speed bumps, I think, would definitely be one of them. But, you know, the other thing is that we should go paint, if we're really on that street, I've been told we can't paint crosswalks at Elm and Ethan Allen, because we don't own the road, so let's go out there tomorrow and paint the crosswalks.
Right. Well, I think that there's, there's several things. One is that if you, if you do talk with folks from state highway, they really don't want to give it up. I mean, they're, you know, they're playing a game here because they're very short-staffed and they're short of money, but, but they don't want to give it up. They do see it as part of their system. We certainly have interest in, the, the road needs to be really rebuilt. It's not just pothole filling. It's some substantial work that needs to be done on the pavement, and we would very much like to see good crosswalks. That's something that we've been prohibited from doing, or not at this point. I don't think we're prohibited from doing that, and I think if, if, I think, you know...
Let's put a stop sign on Chicago Avenue, too. That's like a huge, that's where the bus stop is and all the students crossing, and we've been told we can't do that because it's a state highway. Let's do a stop sign at Elm and Ethan Allen. I mean, why not? What, you know, is it completely and totally ridiculous? We can be completely, we're good at that.
Well, I think that-
Completely and totally ridiculous.
Yeah, obviously, we want things to, to work, and I think that these are good suggestions, but I will go ahead and indicate to Jeremy that we'd like to proceed with the late filed bill, as well as continue the discussions with Chris Van Hollen's office. You know, they're also trying to talk with the folks from state highway, but, you know, there's a new adminis, there's a new district engineer for this area, so there's a, we're a little bit in a, in a state of limbo with them. I think we just need to call attention to the problem.
Well, here's another idea to call attention to it. Set up a stop sign at Ethan Allen and Elm, and then park like four or five police officers there, and write everyone who runs the stop sign, because that's what they'll do. Write them a ticket, and with the ticket, because they're all going to be from out of town, give them a notice for about how they can report to their local legislature about how the state should take responsibility for this road and fix it, so that they can get rid of the stop sign at Ethan Allen and Elm. I, I guarantee you, you'll have people from across Prince George's County and Montgomery County writing to their legislators, asking the state highway administration to take care of Ethan Allen.
The only thing I don't like about the, what I understand is the language of the bill, it suggests that if they fix it once, so basically bring it up to an acceptable standard, then they can absolve future responsibility for it. So does that then mean it actually is our road, and we can put whatever we want on it?
Yes. There's some time-
And we're stuck with a very expensive road.
Yeah, but there's some time, I mean, they can't just do it immediately. There's, they have to negotiate with us, and so there's some language in that. But yes, that was-
Because it is a road that has a lot of traffic, and then will require fairly frequent revavings, so that doesn't, unless we can put a toll on it, it doesn't seem like it's going to be- Toll on, a toll on, that's a good idea. Particularly, so that's not my concern with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were trying to come up with something that actually, you know, that wasn't specific about Ethan Allen. No, it's not, it's not going to, I don't think it's going to go anywhere. It's simply a statement to state highway.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant to say go forward with the introduction of the late bill, just because if we did get what we wanted, we wouldn't want it. So, you know.
Make it a toll ride.
Be careful what you ask for, you may get it, and it could be a sinkhole on cost.
I'm glad to, to bring the copy of, of the text, but I'll send it out to you this evening or first thing in the morning, and I'd like to get your comments back on that, so that if there's something we want to, to change or whatever, we can do that with Jeremy.
One point, Mayor Williams, on that, on your point, which was, we got to this point because, as I understand it, we prefer to own the road than to see it widened by state highway. So if we said, no, no, you take it back, then we may get right back to that same fight of them saying, well, we'd like to widen it, and we say, no, we wouldn't like you to widen it.
They don't have the money to widen it right now. Do you know what it's going to cost to pay for all that right of way under eminent domain?
I hear you, but that's, that's how we got to this point.
That was, that was the reason in the, in the first place that we kept, that we apparently kept the ownership.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, I'll pass that out. Michelle or Ann, did you have, I have a couple other things, but did you have a few other items you wanted to mention?
I would just say a couple other things. One was sort of the timing of, of bill hearings. We are at the press session where we're starting to see a lot of bills popping up for hearings, and we also have a lot of things that are being rescheduled for the last week and a half. So we expect the next few weeks to be pretty heavy in terms of bill hearings. Just wanted to alert you to that. And then also to let you know that there's an unusual meeting that's going to be happening next week with Republican members of the House, and now all senators, not just Republican senators, are being invited to provide their ideas for how to cut the state budget by $2 billion. So that meeting is happening next week. We'll see what happens from there, but in the meantime, the budget hearings continue to go on, and in about three weeks from today, actually, I think it's the date that subcommittees start making their decisions on the budget. So a lot of things are going to be moving in the next three weeks.
Councilmember Robinson?
I have, I have two questions. One is, is there any update on, now I don't know if I'll remember the name, the task force on intergovernmental relations, the relationship between the county and the, and the cities?
The, the task force, I believe, is going to start back up at, this summer. They're, they're obviously taking a break during the legislative session, but my understanding is that the idea is to continue the work of the group this interim.
Okay. Second question, and this, you can make it short, although I'm sure it's a fairly deep topic. I see that anything with a fiscal note has no chance of passing this, this session. I understand that. How is a fiscal note created? In other words, what constitutes a fiscal note, and who puts it together and attaches it to the bill?
Department of Legislative Services.
Right. What does- The Department of Legislative Services drafts the fiscal note, but they do it with input from the state departments that would be affected by a particular bill. So if the bill doesn't have any impact on any state department, it would not have a fiscal note. If a bill has a very nominal fiscal note, you know, or if it's something that leadership wants, like Senate Bill 227, they will work with the department to say, we can cover this under existing, under our existing budget. So sometimes, you know, it's difficult to gauge how a fiscal note will come out, and other times it's not, but it, it does have to be backed up with, you know, some detail. So what happens is that the, much of the staff within the various departments take a look at the bill, determine whether there's going to be any impact to their department. If so, they try to calculate and quantify what that fiscal impact is going to be, and that gets forwarded to a fiscal note writer who then makes judgments about whether they feel the information is accurate.
I, I get about three emails a day from those folks asking for fiscal impacts on immunity, potential fiscal impacts on Tacoma Park. Then we have to either, our finance director or the police department or whomever has to go through and say, no, there won't be a fiscal impact by this bill, or yes, this is approximately what the fiscal impact would be to Tacoma Park. I email that back to the staff person, and then that goes into this mix and shows up as part of a document that I- as part of a document that accompanies the bill.
Okay, you might see where I'm headed here. I'm, as usual, concerned about the relationship between cities and counties, and I'm just wondering, this is kind of a what-if, what if a piece of legislation was drafted which altered that relationship in some way? And it would have a fiscal impact on the cities and the counties, but not on the state? Would such a bill end up having a fiscal note, or is it just completely impossible to tell? So I guess I'll follow that up with saying, if does a fiscal--
You have to look at the content of the fiscal note. So when people say, does it have a fiscal note, that means that somehow it's shown to have a fairly significant fiscal impact.
On who?
On somebody.
On anybody.
And then you look and you see, oh, this will hurt municipalities, or, oh, this will hurt the state from, you know, in this agency.
That's really the essence of my question. If it was only going to hurt municipalities, but not the state budget, if it wasn't going to add anything to the state budget, would it still be considered a fiscal note?
Yes, but it may not be taken really seriously.
Say that again?
It would be a political discussion, then. Is it okay to pass that impact on to municipalities or not? It's a political decision.
And that usually gets called to be an unfunded mandate.
Ann or Michelle, did you have a comment on that?
Just every, Dan, every fiscal note includes a statement as to the state effect, the local effect, small business effect. So every single piece of legislation is going to say, how much, if anything, does a bill cause or generate affecting the state, offers, local governments, and small business.
And county governments.
Municipalities, right.
Okay, thank you. That's a good clarification for me.
That part is called a local impact statement.
Ah, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
And this is Ann. I just wanted to say one kind of fun thing. In the game of open government, something new this year is that you can see committee vote online. So for example, when Michelle was talking about House Bill 90 that was defeated in the House Judiciary Committee by a vote of 12 to 8, I couldn't get myself off mute. I was saying hello, and I was on mute. I just wanted to mention, you can actually look up that 12 to 8 vote right there on that bill information page on the General Assembly's website. It's a very nice feature.
And you can see who voted which way, is that correct?
Yes, and that's new this year.
That's brand new, because that's something Progressive Maryland was very much in favor of, and our District 20 delegates and senator were, were trying to get pushed through in some way. And so that was just a, I'd only heard of that a couple of weeks ago, so that's, what was the nature of the change in policy to make that transparent?
There was a rule change. I'm sorry, Ann, go ahead. That's technically how it happened. There was a rule change. There are a number of pieces of legislation, including one that Heather Meier has produced around open government, and trying to make different aspects of what the legislature does more transparent. And so with a school bill that was introduced at the very beginning of session, there was a question asked at a press conference that Senate President Miller was presiding over, and he initially said, you know, no, we're not doing committee votes online, and then it was either later that day or the next day, he did a complete about face and said, yes, we're going to do it, and they made it happen. So it didn't happen right at the beginning of session, but maybe inside a couple of weeks of session starting. And so when the committees report out they're favorable or unfavorable, or favorable with amendments, vote on a bill, that vote will be online.
And is that a sticky change? In other words, is that in place permanently now, so that we can look forward to having open committee meetings without having it go 180 degrees backwards?
I say so. I mean, I don't see, you know, I can't predict too far in the future.
But I mean, this sounds, it sounds like an on-high Fiat kind of thing, you know? Miller says it will now be transparent, and therefore it's transparent. And if it's that easy to make it go one way, of course, the concern is that he can just as easily decide that, well, you know, it will now not be transparent. Of course, there would be an uproar, but I'm just trying to think, I'm just trying to hear, and this seems to me like one of the most significant things, even though it wasn't a bill that passed, it was just somebody's decision. And so I'm trying to just, I'm just, that sounds like you don't know how it happened very really, or whether it is sticky, and that's my term of art.
It actually happened, it was moved by the Republican caucus in both chambers to highlight, and it was following the trend of what was going on on the federal level, to say, we need to have open, transparent government, we need to see these things in action. And at the beginning of every session, there are rules that each chamber agrees to and abides by. And so what they did was initiate, they brought up a motion to make a rule change around transparency. And one of them was to have committee votes online. Originally, their thought was to try to have the committee votes posted for, I think it was 24 or 48 hours in advance of any action on the floor, so that the public could see. And so there was, there was a pause for a few days. At first, the Senate President said no, but the House Speaker said yes. And he said, yes, let's consider this, and he sent it to the Rules Committee, who came back with a recommendation for the House rules to have committee votes available online. And at that point, the Senate President agreed, and both made changes to their rules to make this happen. I think, you know, what Ann is saying, once you become transparent, I think it becomes much harder to reverse.
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, also, I know that Heather Meier's made quite an effort on having, and trying to encourage the various committee hearings to be on, to be videoed and online, so that you can watch them, and that you don't have to pay extra to get the on-time information from the General Assembly. So we'll see how those go forward. My guess is that they're probably going to move towards that way, since so many other jurisdictions are moving in that direction as well.
But Councilmember Robinson is right that it is easier to make a rule change than to pass a law. So if they decide they did want to change the rules back, it would be easier than having to actually rescind the law or change the law, because there'd be a whole set of hearings that would have to go.
I have a couple other items, if that's good for you, Ann and Michelle.
Sure.
Okay. There are a couple that I know the mayor's been working on with MML Legislative Committee. Several of them are proposed by Delegate Al Carr, who proposes many bills. The Maryland Praesner Bill, the streetlight bill is one. This is one which the effort is to have less light pollution, have more green streetlight fixtures, but the provisions of it were quite onerous on municipal government and county government. My understanding is that MML is working with Al Carr to make that less burdensome. The idea would be that if, for example, if there were an accident and somebody knocked over a streetlight, you might not be able to replace that streetlight easily, and we don't want to be in that situation. We do want to be able to replace a streetlight that's knocked down. Over time, yes, we want to move to more green fixtures, less light pollution, but maybe not necessarily immediately upon an accident.
The way the bill's written, you'd have to go through a whole exercise to replace that, to show that it couldn't be just as effective to do reflective tape or any number of other things, instead of just replacing the streetlight.
Right, so it was amazing. Similarly, I'll pass on, I haven't seen the actual text, but there's a cable bill called the Lifeline Cable Bill, the delegate Carr's put forward, that the cable television folks have concern about. The intention is good on this bill, but it could jeopardize any franchise fees at all received by municipalities and county governments. So again, Delegate Carr's working with the folks to see if that language can be amended, so I'll keep you posted as that moves forward. He's, he had, I don't think it's actually a bill yet, he has proposed language, and Ann was routing that around. One of the things similar to the kind of transparency issues that's been kind of interesting is several bills related to allowing municipalities and other governments to give notice of public meetings, legal notices, and that kind of thing by electronic means, as opposed to having to have a notice of a public meeting posted in a newspaper in a certain number of days in advance. That if there is a process and a tradition in a community to post it on a website where people go for that information, that that can be sufficient, or it can be done in addition to other ways of posting notices. I think the city clerk and I thought that it made sense to do that. Gives us some flexibility, and certainly people are now a little bit more prone to go to a website to see if a meeting's happening than they are to look in the legal section of their newspaper. So I think that that's something that is a useful change.
And at least one of those bills, part of the proposed solution is that if somebody says that they do want to continue to get various notices through the mail, that's not putting it in the newspaper, but various things through the mail as opposed to the website, that the city or the county would have to provide, pay for that mailing for a year, and then that person would have to, I guess, pay for it themselves or move to other venues.
There's quite a few other kinds of bills with, that we're looking at. So far, I don't know of ones that are particularly concerning, but there've been several, there've been a couple clothesline bills, encouraging use of clotheslines in neighborhoods. In general, that's an environmental good thing. There are sometimes concerns about the aesthetics of that in historic districts. Sure that there used to be historic use of clotheslines, but how they're placed and how they look is important. And so we're keeping an eye on that to make sure that if, at least the aesthetics are considered as you look at clothesline bills.
Yeah, there's a clothesline bill that's been put in every year and hasn't had success, and this year it actually has had success. It's, I think it's just about past the House, it's going to cross over to the Senate, and it may actually happen.
And that would be, Montgomery County has like a prohibition against clotheslines or something like that.
Well, there's different--
There's different kinds of provision, but this would ensure that you could have clotheslines.
I've got a couple.
Okay, and then I--
I'll just go over quickly a couple things from today's MML Legislative Committee. We had a presentation from State Planning Secretary Rich Hall and a few other folks on the SB 285, which is the Smart, Green, and Growing Bill, Sustainable Communities Act, which combines qualifying for all of the various community legacy, the heritage tax credit, any number of things. It's seen as--
Did it include the--
I thought originally did, and I didn't hear that one mentioned today, so I'm not sure that it does. It's an uphill climb to get it through. They're not sure whether it's actually going to happen, but they haven't, they didn't even want to discuss a Plan B, but they may have to go to a Plan B if it doesn't happen, because the one thing that would be left abandoned if it didn't pass was that there would be no funding for the historic tax, historic preservation tax credit, which would be, which is very crucial in places like Tacoma Park with a historic preservation district. So there's continuing concern about what would happen with that credit, since it would be unfunded. In this new bill, it would get, it would go from being a, basically a grant funded to setting up, I think it's a $5 million over three-year credit, when you get a 20% credit for expenditures if you qualify. So it's an attempt to consolidate, which is very good, and people are watching it to see where it goes, but it's essentially submitted, it's the governor's bill. There were a couple interesting ones today. One of them, SB 420, actually seems to have some legs. It's for changing the proposed stormwater management situation that we find ourselves in at the moment, which is that in terms of projects that are, have some approval, they have to have gotten completely through their approvals and be on the ground by May 4th of this year, and people are feeling like that's too soon. It's all wrapped up in efforts to improve conditions in the Chesapeake Bay, and efforts to clean it up, and there are attempts to make it a longer time period, or some grandfathering for various stormwater provisions. The SB 420 is the Republicans' attempt to put a halt to that, and their bill says, hold off all regs until 2020. And it's, it's like 2020 is too long, three months from now is too short, so people are working to try and come up with a middle ground. There was an interesting discussion of SB 457, which is attempting to make it so that the State Highway Administration has to discuss with municipalities or counties the speed limit on state highways that are in our jurisdictions, so that they can't just say, no, we're not going to change a speed limit, say, on Carroll Avenue, you know, it's, you know, it's, in that case, it's 20, it's posted 25, therefore, it's not 30, but they can do what they want, and they don't have to consult with us. This is an attempt to get language that says that they have to consult with us. We can request certain lower speed limits on state highways in our jurisdiction and have a discussion about that. So the MML is supporting that with amendments.
You've got the sidewalk one, too, there?
I do. I have the, there's one other, one on, well, it's not quite on highways, it's SB 707, which MML is supporting, which would make it, it's actually proposed by Baltimore City. It would take all of the parking tickets and take them out of going to court. The judges support this as well, that it would be strictly an internal appeal process within the municipality or the county for any parking tickets we write. It would only be some appeal process that would take it to court, but the process would be our own, and which would, because I guess a lot of these things go to the courts, and it clogs the courts, and they just assume and get rid of them, and municipalities would like to have it be just strictly an internal process. The HB 282, MML is supporting, which is kind of giving some funding and reporting requirements for increasing bicycle and pedestrian access, and kind of a companion bill in a way is HB 786, which MML is also supporting, and that is eliciting funds from State Highway Administration for sidewalk construction on state highways in priority funding areas. All municipalities are priority funding areas, and that's the one, and right now, they usually only provide funding if it's part of a building of a state highway or a reconstruction of a state highway, and this would make it so that even if you didn't have any reconstruction project going on, that you could, that there would be some funding, and you could request adding sidewalks to your existing state highway. And that was the interesting ones from today.
Uh-huh, good. Just briefly on the, from Montgomery County, the county CIP hearings, I think, have ended now. There were a couple questions. One is, we finally found out today, Councilmember Snipper, about Flower Avenue sidewalks. They had been in the CIP up to the year 2014, and now they're not, it's not even in there, it's just in the list of, that they'd like to add it later. So that's disappointing. And there are some items coming up about Montgomery College. And there are some items coming up about Montgomery College. I don't know all the details on that. At this point, if the council wants to send a letter or something to the county council about some of these items, I think that that would be the next step. If there's something very specific about Montgomery College, then obviously you can attend the work sessions where they discuss that, and I'll keep you apprised of that.
Yeah, Councilmember Ray and I would like to know when those are-
Is the park, is the Tacoma Pine Ranch Park still in the CIP? Is it?
I don't know, but I think it's still on schedule to be, to begin, to start this in summer.
Could you just check?
I will.
Thanks.
And I'm circling back around to the petition I got for the sidewalk between the Junction and Jackson, and given the effort that you just described and the other efforts on the state highway, what can I tell my constituents who have signed a petition to put a sidewalk between Junction and Jackson?
Well, this certainly is a step in the right direction, that there's an acknowledgement, I would hope that it goes through, that there's an acknowledgement that sidewalks on their own are important along the state highway, and so that even if you're not doing the road, which you really need to do, but even if you're not doing the road, that you can install sidewalks, that that's something that's doable. So it's not really hopeful, but it certainly is a step in the right direction. And they may want to write in, you know, somebody might want to write in on this bill.
Yeah, sent in testimony supporting this bill.
Okay. All right, I can, yeah, well, let's talk about that. But it's, that's not, that's beyond the consideration of whose street it really is and where we get to that. That would be going under the-
It's still a numbered state highway, so let's go that route.
Between Jackson and Carroll on Ethan Allen, is that what you said?
Yes, on the north side.
There's no public right-of-way there.
What does that mean?
That means that the state doesn't have a right to install a sidewalk.
They own the property right to the road?
Yeah.
So the right, there's a 20-foot right-of-way or something like that, is that what you're saying?
There's no right-of-way.
No right-of-way, okay. Is that normal?
No right-of-way past the curb, and most of the area is now and down down.
Is that normal?
No.
And is it-
That doesn't mean you can't do easements and things, too. So that's, it's something to look into.
We got this to put sidewalks there a couple of years ago, and a bunch of people said no.
Well, in this case, that was a different block. That was farther towards New Hampshire. In this case, everybody said yes, so that would be, I guess, a process of-
Sounds like they didn't give easements.
They didn't give easements.
Granting easements.
That's happened on Carroll Avenue with the sidewalk.
Anna Michelle, anything else?
Nothing that I can think of, but certainly available for questions.
I think we're talked out on this one.
Thank you so much. I'll talk with you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Night, all.
And if any of my, thank you, if any of my colleagues have any questions about any of this, Suzanne and I are going to be meeting tomorrow, and that's an opportunity to either put in another question or give some feedback on anything we might want to do, if there's anything in particular that we should put in testimony on or anything like that, that would be helpful to know because things are moving fast.
Well, the sidewalk on the-
Flower.
And Flower.
And a couple of years ago, we were still talking about some payment that was supposedly made when the, during unification regarding the hyperbiker trail and the access for Colby and Cherry. You know how the, that was in the CIP, and they were going to put that crazy sidewalk on Sligo Creek Parkway? That dropped off the CIP, and as I understood it, there was a payment that was supposedly made from Prince George's County Park and Planning to Montgomery County Park and Planning to support that.
Wow.
In any case, the people on Cherry and Colby don't have safe access to walk anywhere out of their neighborhood.
That was quite a battle.
I'm not going to pay the bill, maybe I'll have to double check.
I don't have direct knowledge of it. I think it's possible Heather told me about it, but we discussed it before at council meetings, that there was supposedly this payment related to the hyperbiker trail connections, and that was supposed to pay for that. And there was, there was $300,000 in the CIP at one time to build that crazy thing.
That's right, there was. Yeah, there was that.
It was the world's most expensive one-block sidewalk, as I recall.
Well, a terrible solution to make people walk along Sligo Creek Parkway also.
Okay, follow up. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. And we have one final item on tonight's meeting agenda, which is discussion-
Everybody wake up. Everybody's left.
Discussion of off-leash dog areas.
My name is Mary Jane Mitrulli. I live in Allegheny Avenue. Actually, I'm more specifically talking about Spring Park, not, away from Tacoma Park. I can't speak, I'll have everybody else.
Hang on a second. Mary Jane, hang on. Barb?
No, I mean, I can certainly introduce the item. I think as the council is aware, there have been a number of city residents who have interest in establishing an area where dogs are permitted to run off-leash. It has been staff's recommendation, as well as that of the city's liability insurance carrier, that if this is something that the council wishes to pursue, that a fenced area be established where dogs could run off-leash. I think if the council has interest in establishing such an area, I think there are two options before you. One is for the city to commit its own operating funds, two, establishing a fenced dog park on city-owned property. Obviously, we're expecting this to be a tough fiscal year in FY 2011, so as you deal with everything else, you would have to balance that expenditure against other priorities that the council may have. Alternatively, at the council's direction, staff could work with Park and Planning to request establishment of a fenced dog park on property that they own. In preparation for tonight's work session discussion, staff did go out and review a number of sites that at least we thought might be appropriate as a starting point for the council's discussion. Those are listed on the agenda cover sheet. One was the Prince George's Triangle, which I think everyone's aware of where that is. It's Prince George's Avenue right near New Hampshire. I know that there, we were having one of our planning staff who was out doing some other work in that general location. We did go ahead and take the opportunity to have that planning staff member sort of touch base with some of the residents in that area. Certainly, that's not a full-blown community discussion of the issue. Right, but there seems to at least be some fairly strong interest. We also looked at two areas that were owned by Park and Planning. One is Opal Daniels Park. If you're familiar with that park, particularly if you look, you're kind of walking in, kind of off to the right, there's a very large open field. It would not really impede other park uses. And we also took a look at the green space that is at the intersection of Maple and Sligo Creek Parkway. We have approached Park and Planning just very, in a very preliminary fashion, about the two areas that they own. I think their initial indication is based on their typical standards. Opal Daniels was described as possibly being too small. They did have some concerns about the Maple Avenue location as possibly being too close to the stream. One of the things they obviously look at are environmental concerns, and I think we have an email from one of the people who was more than happy to work with us and give us the benefit of their experience, but to quote her, "It is not as simple, unfortunately, as throwing up a fence and declaring it a dog park." So there is a lot of things to consider. I think our hope this evening, one is to gauge the council's interest in actually establishing a fenced dog park area within the boundaries of Tacoma Park. Two, if there's a location that you have some interest in, certainly, we tried to list three that we thought might be appropriate as staff. There may be other locations that the council believes would be appropriate. It would be helpful for us to know those areas, and certainly, we're happy to have some follow-up discussions with Park and Planning if that's one of your preferred sites. It's difficult for us at this point without knowing what location the council may prefer. To give you an idea of what the cost may be, our assumption is, in any of the areas that we mentioned, that you would want something that's a little bit decorative, that you're not just going to slap up a chain-link fence. I think that would be viewed as objectionable by probably the adjacent property owners. In talking to the Public Works Director, she did obtain a fencing estimate for a five-foot-high decorative black aluminum fence, which would probably be somewhere in the range of $40 to $45 per linear foot. So once we have a better idea of what location, if any, the council's interested in, we could certainly do a little bit more work to give you an idea of what that cost may be. So I think all we're looking for tonight is just some general discussion about, and direction of where the council would like to go on this matter, so we can do some additional research for you.
Excuse me, I'd like to talk.
We're going to talk first, you'll get a chance. Anybody have any thoughts about fenced locations, I guess, versus unfenced? And then following on that, other locations, this location, directions to go? I'll look to Councilmember Robinson first, then Councilmember Clay.
Have you considered fencing parts of Spring Park?
We actually did look at that. I think one of the challenges, at least from staff's perspective, is looking at the way that park is utilized, is trying not to interfere with any of the sports. We do have limited fields in the city. I think if we were to look at that, Councilmember Robinson, I think from staff's perspective, the most viable would be, for lack of a better way of putting it, almost a dog run, if you will. It would be fairly more long than I think wide. From our perspective, that probably wasn't as desirable, but certainly, that's something we could look at. But we were trying to, if we were to look at that area, we would separate it probably from the field.
Okay, and that implies that you consider dog parks not as a shared use, but as a dedicated use. Am I right there?
I think that would be accurate. I think as staff has talked about, I think one thing we could expect, and I would hope, is that if we were to establish a dog park, I think you would see intensified use. I think if you envision having small children playing any kind of sports, you're going to have grass that basically gets, not to be disgusting in a public setting, but probably killed off if you have intensified use by dogs. From staff's perspective, particularly if you have an area that is used for picnicking, sports, that probably isn't incompatible use. So I think your assessment is probably correct in terms of how staff views the situation.
So that's a shift from what we have now, which is shared use, where dog owners use parks and people use parks, and the concern is that we have a law which says that that's not allowed. But the status quo is, other than, and I don't want to minimize the liability issues, but apart from the liability issues, if we can just put that aside for a moment, apart from that, we have currently shared use of our parks with dogs and people in some locations.
I think that would be correct, and I think if you, council has had the opportunity to look at the comments that we received in response to the Spring Park petition. Certainly, there were liability issues raised, not only by staff, but I think some of those individuals, but certainly, I think, some of those shared use conflicts, and that was coming from some of the residents who responded to the Spring Park petition, concerns about, whether you agree with this or not, it was certainly the statements that were made to the city, concerns about people jogging on the path and having dogs who are off-leash, you know, approaching joggers, people with small children who felt that their dogs were basic, you know, dogs were rushing up to their small children. Ma'am, please.
Mary Jane, please be respectful of people in the office.
Right, and as I said, whether or not you agree with that, those were certainly the comments that the city received. So I think there at least was some indication, Councilmember Robinson, from some of your constituents, who felt that even the use that is occurring now, which is obviously not authorized by the city and is in violation of the city code, that they felt that that was a conflict with other uses of the park. Many of those same individuals, I think, did recognize that there was strong interest on the part of dog owners and wanting a place, you know, to allow their dogs to run off-leash. They were very supportive of that. Those individuals just simply said that they thought that there should be an established fenced area.
Okay, so the trade-off here is, if we go down this path of dedicated use for, dedicated land for dog use in parks, it will segregate dog use and other use in any of the parks that we put it in, and then we maintain those, the parks that are for off-leash dog use in a different way than we maintain our parks now. So one question would be, what's the difference in the maintenance? There's the initial cost, I understand, of putting up a fence. There's the sense of registration, there's a sense of responsibility, and then there's ongoing maintenance. And so that's one thing I think we need to think about. I'm a little reluctant to pick one spot in town and say, "That's our town dog park," and then have everybody drive to that dog park in their cars with their dogs and have a very intensive use of that dog park and everyone else's is, if they don't use that park, to be a scofflaw and feel that their, that the $500 sword of Damocles is floating over their head. That's one concern I have, is to not only segregate use, but also put one spot where we have a dog park and say, "The deal's done." That doesn't sit well with me. So I'll just leave my comments at that for the time being.
Thanks for putting together the information, especially about how the other parks do their business. I've seen all of those models work, and I, you know, I think we just need to pick from those what works for us. I haven't heard anything negative about a dog park in the triangle at Prince George's Avenue, except from one guy who was mad that we were talking out about dog parks when there was snow plowing to be done, but I don't think he actually objected to the idea of the dog park. He was just mad. I think that we should look for, if we're going to have a single large park, I think it should be centralized in the city. So I've never been to Opal Daniels Park, so I don't want to say, "Oh, I think it should be there," but I would say that I think it would be nice to have a centralized dog park location. If you're thinking about Prince George's Triangle, there's permit parking there. So people aren't going to be driving to the dog park and parking because then they're going to be getting tickets. And I think I agree with Dan also that, you know, maybe one dog park area isn't necessarily the solution. A smaller area like the triangle at Prince George's could serve a lot of the people in that area. It would also draw people from the Prince George's side of New Hampshire Avenue, and for that reason, I'm kind of interested in restricting it to Tacoma Park residents and having a mechanism for that. And possibly using maybe a dog park or a dog registration fee to fund the fencing and maintenance of those areas. And the last thing I'm going to say is that, I was hoping that you would provide us a listing of all of the vacant land that's, or park-type land in the city that's owned by the city and Park and Planning, because I've been surprised at a couple of little sort of things. So I would love to see an inventory, if such exists, of all of the things that are owned by the city and all the things that are owned by Park and Planning.
Sure, and I think you raised some really good points, and those were some of the same issues that staff discussed. You know, if the council were to establish one area, we tried to, you know, these were not the only ones we looked at. We tried to look at something that was central. There was actually a WSSC lot over near Spring Park that we spent a lot of time kind of looking at, but our concern was that you had, I mean, it was literally surrounded by certain homes. We could see that even if you had a current user who might find that acceptable, they may have concerns if they go to sell the property. For some people, it would be a benefit; for some people, it would not. But I can certainly look and see what kind of inventory we have. Councilmember Clay, get that to you.
I'd like to see that. And also, I think it's not bad for the council to engage that discussion as well, not because I think we should second-guess the staff, but because our constituents are going to ask us about it, and so to the extent that we've been a part of the discussion, it's a lot better to understand how those issues play out. It's easier for me to explain that to my constituents in that way.
I think it's a very easy starting point, and I can get this to you tomorrow, is just to provide you the other locations that we looked at as we were sort of, you know, trying to make some recommendations to you all, and you can kind of draw your own conclusions about how those, you know, stack up against some of the locations we listed this evening.
I just want to piggyback two quick comments on Councilmember Clay's, because you brought up, or I guess, city manager brought up the WSSC lot that is on, I'm assuming you're talking about the one that's on Cockrell Lot Circle?
Yeah.
And the other one that I thought of that I think is a WSSC lot is the one that's on New Hampshire Avenue, just south of Sligo Creek Parkway?
Yeah.
And- And wondering whether there's, because you were saying, basically, you know, city-owned, Park and Planning, WSSC, and I wonder if there's anybody else, like, there's the Pepco substation directly across the street, yes, that way. So that it would be any of those entities that might have property that this type of use might be possible on. And the other thing that I thought of when Councilmember Clay talked about permit parking on Prince George, the, one of the difficulties with Opal Daniels is that the access from Carroll, there's no parking, and the access from the other side, there's very limited parking, and it's down in a dead end that's fairly tight. So those types of parking issues come up with a number of these, where people might not necessarily think they do, because I didn't remember that there was permit parking at the Prince George's site, which kind of changes some of the possibilities there. So any of that kind of information that goes with any of those other sites is good to attach to that, so that it's not just sites, but it's some of the restrictions or problems that are associated with them that we know. And then if anybody else comes up with any other information, looking at that, to say, oh, I know that there's another problem, or, oh, no, that's changed, that's incorrect, that would be very helpful in that discussion.
But you know, no parking for a place that's in the center of the city might be a good thing, because it means that the people who are going there are walking there.
Could be.
And so it would be to go and park, it'd be an easier way to regulate without having to, like, check IDs.
Right. And that's why I was thinking, gee, that piece of property down at Maple and Sligo Creek, even though it's close to the creek, might be good, because I don't think parking is as much as an issue, and it's still very central. Councilmember Wright.
So I think I take a little different perspective on this. I think it is commendable that we could try and establish a place in the city which is always fenced in, dog park, non-shared. But I actually think we need to really think about a way, because we have such limited space, to have some of the parks in the city, maybe many of the parks in the city, actually be multiple, multi-use. And I understand the liability issue with no fence, but Brookline, Massachusetts has done it, it's in a different state, so the liability issues might be different, has done it with no fences. I would say at the least we could say, we could think about fencing those parks in and having them be multi-use. And I think many of the conflicts happen because there are no rules or ways for people to understand how and what times the uses should be for the parks. So you take the example of someone has their kid there and a dog runs up and the kid gets scared. If they know in the field at Spring Park that's fenced in, that for certain hours of the day, it's designated to be used as an open dog run, then that kind of solves the issue. You set the parameters and the rules, and then people can manage within those rules. I think if we only establish one or two fenced-in parks, like, say, you take Opal Daniels Park, yeah, it's pretty centrally located, but people realistically are not going to, a lot of people are not going to walk with their dog much more than a half or a quarter mile. Particularly, a lot of the people take their dog to the park every morning and play frisbee at the park, at the field behind the school, or I'm sure at Spring Park. And so in that situation, if we just do the fenced park and we don't, you know, one fenced, centrally-located park, we don't set a set of rules for these other parks, people are going to continue to use it, and we're still going to have the same conflicts and points of tension and questions at those parks. It's similar to me about, you know, on a college campus, you put a path down, right, and then people walk on the routes that are going to work best for them. And the same thing's going to happen around the park use. And I don't think we have the resources really to go around and be giving $500 tickets to people when the police are going to have better uses of their time. And there's other people out there, other cities have figured out ways to do shared uses. And I like that we have included some of what other cities around here have done, but I wonder if there's, looking at other cities across the country that have had innovative approaches to dog parks. And I, if then also looking at all, I agree with Colleen that we should be able to look at really all the potential spaces and, including public-private partnership opportunities, like the Pepco lot across the street, so.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I'd just like to second what Councilmember Wright has just said. I think shared use makes a whole lot more sense. I am concerned when I think about, you know, our neighborhood, Ward Four, where one of the proposed locations is, that's the park at the corner of Maple and Sligo Creek Parkway is heavily used by the young people during the summer, and to take that away for a dedicated use dog park would be unfortunate for the young people. So again, I think Councilmember Wright's suggestion, I support.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm of sort of two minds about this topic, because I've owned dogs all my life. I now currently own a greyhound that does one of two things. It either loves to run like crazy or sleep. And when it doesn't get a walk, it won't leave me alone. And I'd like nothing better than to have a place to take the dog and snap off the leash and let the dog run itself out. But I also know that in, without a fenced area, the dog is just going to go off and I'll never see it again. And I also know that there's a lot, there's a million different kinds of breeds, little ones and big ones. Some dogs are aggressive, and some are small and more aggressive or not, but, and I've seen a lot of dog parks locally and throughout, in other parts of the United States. I've had some pretty terrible experiences with ones that were not well-done, that were too small, didn't have enough slope, and because of the intensity of use, simply wore out the soil and the grass, and you ended up with mud puddles, and in the wintertime it just became ice. And so I love the idea of a fenced dog park and to come apart, but I simply just know that it's one of those great things that's going to be complicated to get implemented. And it's an emotional kind of issue, because as a dog lover and an owner, I just know that people get pretty passionate about it, yet there's other people who are equally passionate about their anxieties around dogs. So I'm not offering any solutions. I do think, in general, the larger the space, the better, because then you have a much less wear and tear on any, you know, it's less intensive use, same number of dogs spread out. And so therefore, it's easier to maintain and to remain attractive, because nobody likes to have a dog get back in their car with muddy feet, and you don't even know what's on the bottom of the dog's feet. I've seen them run privately by a nonprofit, like over in College Park off of University Boulevard. There's a little one that we belong to, they charged $80 a year, it was about the size of this room, and it was pretty bad. Had some of the worst symptoms that I've just described. But, you know, one thing that we need to think about is the possibility that if a dog park can get set up, that it could be run not so much by the city, but administered by a community organization. Because I hate to think of having an employee in the city get all bogged down with their time, registering dog owners, and where do you live, and when was the last time you paid in issuing tags or whatever. And this could be done by an organization, that would be something to think about. I could go on, but the hour's late. And I have ideas and I want to share them, and I think this is a discussion that we need to continue. I also think that the cost is something that we need to be careful about, because this is not a time when we can be, in my opinion, talking about something that is as discretionary as a dog park, when we've got some serious budget problems affacing us. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper.
I have a lot of things I'd like to say, too, but given the lateness of the hour, I'll just restrict myself to a couple. I think that, like, people that I've talked to who live in Virginia and parts of Maryland with access to dog parks in our general area, say that the fenced parks reduce tremendously the conflict between the dog owners, dog lovers, and the community who also wants to use green space. That trying to do a shared use location is just a recipe for continual complaints. There will just be families and others who, you know, just cannot figure out how to make that shared space work, for any number of reasons, whether it's the dog's fault or whether it's the human's fault. So I'm not, I just don't see how a shared space is going to work as a long-term, as a long-term solution. My own kids have had very scary incidents with dogs, and I've had neighbors talk about that as well. I have a lot of constituents who would love a dog park, and I think a dog park is a great idea. I do think the, if I were going to locate one, I would, of course, locate it near my ward. So I like the Maple and Sligo Avenue space myself best, because if you do a fenced-in space, you're going to, of course, lose some area for use. So that would be my preferred location. I do think that it's absolutely essential that a community group of some kind or another, whether it's the dog owners or somebody else, be in charge of managing it rather than the city. Those I've talked to who've started dog parks, those people who've used dog parks, have all said that it's a little tough to get going, to make people cough up the money to buy the fencing, let's say, or whatever else might be needed, apply for a grant to get the money if that's what's needed. But in the end, it's a better way to do it, because then the dog owners feel responsibility for it. And so they're the ones who make sure that only folks who have paid the, you know, annual fee, use the dog park, et cetera. For the city to begin policing that kind of thing is really an unfair, it's really an unfair burden on the city, frankly. We just don't have the staff and unlikely to have the staff who can be there essentially all the time, all the hours that the dog park is open, because you would want it open from early in the morning to, you know, late at night. I just think there are too many issues for the city to be managing, and I'd love to see somebody else do it. And I'll just stop there.
And when you said, close to your ward, it reminded me of a piece of property that has some space, but I wonder whether I should even bring this up, which is the Adventist Hospital site.
Right. I thought of that, too.
That may present more problems than it's worth getting into, but I'll just mention it as a thought. I want, you know, you never know until they ask, so maybe add that one to the list.
In the Gazette.
Sorry?
Make sure to capture his suggestion in the Gazette.
Mary Jane Machuie is here, and you've put a bunch of effort into this. I know you were behind the, a lot of effort in Spring Park, and so I want to give you the chance to share your thoughts.
Thank you. When I came here, I noticed everybody else, when they got here, they were allowed to talk, and then you spoke. That's why I got upset, because I thought you were disrespecting me. Because I started talking, and you told me I was being rude, and I had to listen to you all. And I listened for a really long time. And some of the stuff was making me frankly very angry. Some of the stuff about dogs hurting children, all that, that really made me angry, because that dog, people, for over 20 years, had been at Spring Park. Not me, I've been since July 2008. And there, I've asked, and there's been no one incident of a child being hurt that had to go to a doctor in over 20 years. And that used to be an open-air drug market, and since we started coming there, it is a lot less crime there. And I myself, we pick up our poo, we're very good, our group, our morning group. We come there, there's no children around at that time, none. I think one boy came, and the whole time, since July 28th, I've seen Kane, and the dog didn't hurt him at all, they ignored him, to play basketball. And so I get really upset when I hear all this stuff about, oh, the dogs are attacking the children stuff, like in that newsletter article that said seven or eight times about the children, don't get along with dogs, the dogs are menaced to children, and words to that effect. And I'm sorry, it just really gets me really angry. And I also get angry, people complaining, blaming us on any dog that's loose in Tacoma Park. Why, where are we blamed? Because there's some pit bull that, we don't have no pit bull in our group. Why are we, some guy wrote about it in the comments that you got, about a pit bull running loose and terrifying people and pooing in people's yard. We have nothing to do with that pit bull. Why are we blamed for it? I mean, it's not fair. And I picked up personally, picked up trash, I retrieved a brand-new iPod and a nice-looking jacket from the soccer area that some young man evidently left, and returned it into the police. We do good things. It's not, you know, and we pick up our own poo. Maybe other people let their dogs poo there, but we can't control that, I'm sorry. We are very good about picking, and, I mean, our group, okay? I just want to say, just let you know, okay? Because I just get upset about all this stuff, about how horrible we are. And we're not perfect, okay? We're not perfect, but, you know, I don't want to give the name of every irresponsible dog owner in Tacoma Park being blamed on our group, okay? Please. And I just wanted to say that, basically, I would prefer to keep the 20-year-old-plus petition going, and to my knowledge, maybe three times in all that time, the cops have been called on us, and it's not for anything except dogs running loose, nothing else, but no attacks, nothing. And I prefer that personally, but to placate other people and to also, I spoke to some other neighbors who said that, like your dog, they said if you let it loose, it would run and run and run. I have a friend who has a beagle, and she says the same thing would happen to her dog. And I like this woman, so I figured, you know, I should take her in consideration, people like her. And so now I'm changing my mind. I'm against the flow. I'm sort of in between. You know, the group as a whole does not approve a fence, but I'm going against the grain as a compromise. So I'm also resentful that you're speaking about spring parks, and it's not acceptable. I think it is acceptable, and I'm willing to go with anybody to show you areas where I think could be used. And I'm kind of, I'm selfish. I mean, I worked like my tail off helping this, and then you're all talking about other places that aren't even walking distance of where I live. And I have an old 1989 car, which is about to die on me, and I can't afford another one. So hell, I want to go to a place I can walk to. So just telling it as it is, so. I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but I'm, you know, I've done a fair lot of work in this, so I've got a very emotional attachment to it, maybe too much, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your name, Mr. Mary Jane?
Yeah.
I just wanted you to know that the people who come up here and speak first are city staff members.
Oh, okay.
And the ordinary order of things is that something gets introduced. We should actually move it and second it before we start talking about it, but we don't always get that done. And then the city staff people who are responsible for that area do the presentation on it. So for example, Suzanne Ludlow, who's the deputy city manager, did the presentation on legislative affairs, because that's her arena. The woman who came and spoke about the, what was the, what?
The ex-offender.
Yeah, the ex-offender stuff.
Former offender.
If the former offender, she's a city staff person also.
staff person also. And in fact, ordinarily...
Oh, I didn't know that.
They were all staff members. And ordinarily, when we have work session items, we don't even let the public speak. So it's, it's unusual to have a person speak, but when the public does speak, it always comes at the, at the end of that process. So, you know, there's really no need to feel, feel slighted. It's actually out of the ordinary to have someone come and speak at a work session. And the other thing that I wanted to say to you is that I don't think your feeling about wanting to have a place that you can walk to is out of character or incompatible with what I heard at least Dan and Josh say. And I said as well, that, you know, it might be better to have, you have multiple smaller sites, but definitely having a, if we're going to have one site, a centralized location is, is something to consider in the mix. Another thing to consider in the mix would be where you've got neighborhood support around it. A central location doesn't do you any good if you don't have neighborhood support. And our job is to bring all of those different issues out onto the table to be discussed, but I don't think that they're incompatible with what you presented here in any way.
Can I make a comment about the Pepco place?
Please come to the microphone.
You need to come up to the mic, so we can hear you.
I just have a question. Isn't, isn't, are places like that are bad for one's health? The waves, electromagnetic waves or something?
No.
Just proven. Okay.
Just proven that they're not bad.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
Just have one very quick comment, that if we do look at any smaller parks, there's a dog park opened up near my office in DC that actually has an AstroTurf. It's like a domed AstroTurf play area. I think it's a domed, I assume, to deal, like, help with runoff or whatever, prevention of puddles. So that might be, you know, I heard, if it's going to be intensely-used place, like Fred mentioned, it can get torn up, and there can be puddles and mud and that sort of stuff. We might just look at what DC's done in that location, they probably studied the issue.
In that regard, the City of Hyattsville just opened a dog park last, this past year over on Agar Road, I think that's how you pronounce that, A-G-A-G-E-R, say, sort of my novelty. I'm a newcomer in this city. And that is split, it's a large one, I haven't used it, but my wife has. It's not restricted to City of Hyattsville.
It's a park and planning park, I believe.
Yeah, and it's split into two sides, one for large and one for small dogs.
What if you have a big dog that loves small dogs?
That's recommended.
Well, it's kind of like North Korea and South Korea, yes.
City Manager Matthews, I just want to make sure that you also put Ed Wilhelm Field on the list of parks, even though I know that's a park and planning park, but you've mentioned other park and planning parks.
It sounds to me like we have some requests for information, some things that the city manager's going to get. I think we by no means exhausted the possibilities or the questions, but at least we've started to get some of the issues and concerns on the table, and we're going to have to revisit this. And I would like to revisit it sooner rather than later. I don't want to drag this out for months or years, it's going to drag out some, but...
What about cats? Never mind. Sorry, I asked.
I can get you tickets.
They don't get on lease.
But I think we're, we're nowhere, nowhere near resolution on this, but we'll just have to continue to work on it.
You want it on a short leash.
Curb your, curb your comments.
Sounds like a move for adjournment.
I think so.
We had a question in the back.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I'm going to turn that mic on and say it for loud, so that folks at home can hear. It's not AstroTurf, it is a, there are more than one, I think three or four at least, and now more and more companies are getting into it because the dog park issue is, God, it's so big nationwide. There are companies that are now making a specific, I mean, it's fake grass, it is AstroTurf in that sense, but it is specifically designed to, or formulated to properly absorb or take care of the kinds of acids and other chemicals that are in dog...
Urine.
Urine and feces. And it's specialized for dog parks, there are lots of companies that do it. You might want to explore the costs of that.
People.
Explore the other costs of putting up the fence and everything else, because that might help mitigate things, especially if the area is near a stream or anything like this. I think if it's near a stream, you can't just do the AstroTurf, there's some under, you've got to dig down, or some kind of under, special sand or whatever there, too, but there are, one more thing.
Thank you. Thank you for discussing.
And we'll return.